Everyone, I'm ready down there. Okay, let's rock and roll. Alrighty, I wanted to call the meeting to order. Good evening, welcome to our first meeting of the 2025 year. Happy New Year, everyone. Wanted to call the January 13th meeting of the City Council to order. Madam Clerk, can you start with roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Conley?
Here.
Ms. Downs?
Here.
Ms. Flynn?
Here.
Ms. Sean Hiscott?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Ms. Underhill?
Here.
And Mayor Hardy?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
Let's move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will join me, please.
To the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to adopt tonight's meeting agenda, please?
I move to adopt tonight's meeting agenda.
In a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adopted. A new thing that we have added to the agenda is the city attorney suggested that we identify any conflicts of interest early in the meeting agenda. So with that, I'm looking at my colleagues to see if there's anything that people need to declare in advance before we get into the meeting itself. Okay, seeing done, let's move on. I think it'll just be something we have to develop our habit in. Let's move on to proclamations. Tonight, we have a proclamation recognizing Monday, January 20th as a City Falls Church Day of Service, and Ms. Downs will do the honors.
Proclamation recognizing Monday, January 20th, 2025 as City of Falls Church Day of Service. Whereas, the City of Falls Church is a welcoming and respectful place for people of all faiths, all races, all cultures, all sexual orientations, and all backgrounds. And whereas, the City Council wishes to reaffirm the longstanding community values of equality, inclusion, and diversity, and amplify efforts to support those values. And whereas, in numerous proclamations in support of fair housing, disability rights, immigrant rights, and the rights of LGBTQ community, the City Council has always taken a strong stand in opposition to discrimination against anyone. And whereas, the City Council encourages positive action to combat intolerance. And whereas, on January 20th, 2025, we honor Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. for leading the civil rights movement in this country until his death by assassination in 1968, to advance civil rights for people of all color in the United States through nonviolence and civil disobedience. And whereas, Dr. King said, "Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others?" And each year, on the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday, Americans across the country answer that question by coming together to serve their neighbors and communities. And whereas, service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how Falls Church meets the challenges faced by the city, the Commonwealth, and the nation. And whereas, the Falls Church City Council believes that ordinary citizens armed with compassion and the willingness to serve can come together to change the world and pursue the nation's highest ideals.
Now therefore, I, Letty Hardy, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby recognize the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday on January 20th, 2025, as the City of Falls Church Day of Service. Encourage all citizens to observe this day with appropriate civic, community, and service projects in honor of Dr. King, and affirm our city's commitment to the values of equality, inclusion, and diversity. Do we have anyone in the audience to help receive the proclamation? If not, we'll save it, and we'll probably try and do a photo, maybe? I know that one way that I'm particularly proud of, that we've made a tradition in City Council, I think for the past eight years, we've embarked on a service project together, and we'll probably talk about it during council requests. Hopefully, that's something that all of my colleagues will be able to come together on Monday to do together. You want to do a... I think OCom's requesting a photo. We'd be happy to do that. And I think a note for the community is the annual MLK March is actually the Saturday and not an MLK Day. So I wanted to note that for people who are joining in that nice annual tradition as well.
So my... I was just looking that... My understanding is that it will be a workshop at 10 o'clock. Will the march itself occur on Saturday?
I believe it's 10 o'clock for the walk, and then the workshop follows.
So they'll be meeting at the arch at 10 o'clock on Saturday, followed by... And the march is to the Falls Church, and there'll be then a workshop that will occur at the Falls Church that will continue on till 3:00 p.m.
Great.
All are welcome.
Thank you to the Hill Foundation for continuing that. Okay, let's move on to the O's of office. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone here to take an oath?
I don't believe so. Thank you.
Okay, let's move to receipt of public comments. Let's start with summary of written comments, please.
Since your last regular meeting, the following comments were received in writing regarding accessory dwellings. Pat Myers of 115 Buxton Road asked that the City Council deny the proposed accessory dwelling code update. Lorraine O'Rourke of 807 Lincoln Avenue expressed serious concerns and asked a question about the proposed code update. Joseph Shirizzi wrote to support the proposed accessory dwelling code update to include the RM zone. Regarding the Maple and Annandale Traffic Circle Project, Kathy Thompson of 502 West Broad Street expressed concerns and asked questions about the traffic circle project. In other messages, the Employee Advisory Council wrote to support budget guidance that aligns with the effort to attract quality employees and to retain staff. The Economic Development Authority provided a recommendation for parklet naming, requesting names that are easy to spell and pronounce, for example Cavalier Trail Plaza, and not the names of people. Jackie Chen wrote with concerns about aggressive driving on Haycock Road between Great Falls and Westmoreland Streets. Jean Gresko of 120 North Fairfax Street praised her recent snow removal efforts and suggested that snow removal and emergency vehicle access must be considered in all city planning or zoning changes. Jess Hegenbar wrote with concerns about the status of the high school baseball field redevelopment project and the late start it would entail for the athletes. Robert Patillo, President of the Greater Hillwood Citizens Association, wrote with a traffic calming request for Hillwood Avenue. Dave Rifkin of 126 Whittier Circle wrote with concerns about brick sidewalk conditions on his street. And Don Vathidis of 206 Patterson Street wrote with concerns about the size of a new traffic bump out near Founder's Row 2. And that was it. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, let's take public comment live now or virtually. Do we have any speakers listed submitted?
We do, and I don't have anybody remotely signed up, but first we have... Oh, I will let everybody know that we do have a three-minute limit, just to make sure we get everybody in, and I will put the timer up now. It'll give you a little yellow warning when it's time to wrap up, and our first speaker is Robert Patillo, followed by Bill Ackerman.
Thank you for the opportunity to address City Council about safety on Hillwood Avenue, where I have lived since 1998, number 1011. Speeding was already a major issue for the neighborhood by at least that time and has been a problem ever since. And there would be a never-ending cycle of complaints, followed by a period of enforcement, and then eventually a return to the same speeds as before. Periodically parked vehicles on both sides of Hillwood have been struck and often totaled, usually at night, and by speeding motorists who often were impaired in some way. In June of the past year, within a period of two weeks, two parked cars were totaled on the north side of Hillwood. In the first instance, on June 9th, it was broad daylight, and the struck vehicle was thrown up onto the sidewalk where it slid for another 12 feet on the passenger side. My family had just been walking in that spot shortly before. This was a new and deadly level of speeding and recklessness, and I vowed that both as a resident and as president of the Greater Hillwood Citizens Association, I would do all in my power to pursue a solution. Assistant City Manager Andrew Young came to see and discuss Hillwood with me in July, promising that the engineering staff would evaluate it. The following month, he relayed to me their disappointing conclusion that, quote, "There really aren't any viable changes for us to make administratively due to the fact that a number of changes to the streetscape have already been made to reduce speeds, traffic islands, marked parking lanes, striping near the intersections," et cetera, unquote. He then recommended working the situation through the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program with Jenna Brumman, which I have been doing. Since then, I've learned that multiple people on Hillwood were likewise engaged but had not yet circulated a petition. One person emailed the neighborhood, in fact, today about traffic speed, but her area of concern is the west end of Hillwood from Cleve to Cherry Street. We got in contact and are agreeing to work together to consolidate community support. The Traffic Calming Handbook on page four says that the city staff will meet internally to, quote, "determine whether the requests can be handled administratively or whether it needs to be handled through a larger public engagement process," unquote. I disagree with Mr. Young's conclusion that nothing can be done administratively, and I would request that City Council override that decision and request that studies begin immediately to find a solution to bring traffic speed down, starting up the hill east of Roosevelt Street, where the city has jurisdiction all the way up past the 24-hour fitness. This is where the speed starts to build up there. And a study... There's a lot of steps between a study and a conclusion, so whether or not we have... It's done administratively or it's as a result of a petition, you still have to start with the study. We will pursue a community consensus as well, but I do not want to see our cause drown in red tape getting back to exactly where we are right now.
Next, we have Bill Ackerman, followed by Bob La Genesse.
Good evening. My name is Bill Ackerman. I reside at 149 South Spring Street. Let me first apologize for my less-than-formal attire, as I got a high tail here afterwards through a basketball rec practice starting at 8:30. So I am currently a member of the newly-formed Falls Church 250 Committee, and in my second year, serving on the Recs and Parks Committee. Tonight, I am speaking as an individual, not on behalf of the Recreation and Parks Committee. However, it is from our most recent committee meeting that I bring this turf construction matter to your attention. During that meeting, we learned that the summer fireworks display will likely be canceled for the second consecutive year due to delays in completing the turf baseball field at Meridian High School. This news is deeply disappointing, and it raises numerous concerns that require immediate attention from the city. Key questions that I would like to know: Why are we just now learning about this? Why is this information being shared through the Recs and Parks Committee rather than directly from the city or the schools? Transparent communication is essential, and this delay in sharing such critical information is troubling. What caused this delay? I know the permitting process can be complex, arduous, and then at times probably stupid, but this project has been in the works since 2023. Everyone involved understood the timeline and had ample lead time. If this delay is indeed accurate, it reflects a failure of leadership, whether on the part of the city, the schools, or both. While seeking accountability can wait, we do need a clear, immediate explanation of what went wrong. Two, focus on solutions. The top priority now must be resolving this issue now. One, what is the plan moving forward? If the turf field will not be ready in time, is the next best option of pretty much all the bad options now appears to be making the grass field, quote-unquote, "serviceable" by March 1st? Two, what resources will the city commit to this effort? Given the city's role in this situation, it only seems fair that additional resources, both financial and manpower, be allocated to remedy this problem. Returning the grass field to a playable condition requires significant effort and must begin immediately to ensure the field is ready on time. The delay not only disrupts our community plans, like the fireworks, as I mentioned, but as a field that the Recs and Parks Group could use for their activities, which are always in constant demand, but also increases the overall cost of the project, a cost that could have been avoided with better planning and execution. In conclusion, we can address this accountability at a later date, but right now, we need a clear path forward. I urge the city to prioritize this issue, communicate transparently, and take decisive action to ensure our community can move forward without further disruption. Thank you for your time and your attention to this matter.
Thank you. Next, we have Bob La Genesse, followed by Matisse Johnson.
Good evening, Bob La Genesse, 409 South Virginia Avenue. I appear tonight in opposition to roundabouts in general, but particularly at Maple and Annandale Avenue. If it's too late for that location, then perhaps I can spare some other neighborhood from the abomination that is roundabouts. And I formulated that opinion by living in Australia for five years, where they make excessive reliance to no great success on roundabouts. In that particular location, or in any location in Falls Church, it will be new to drivers, and so therefore, they're going to have to learn to yield left and also yield again to pedestrians. Therefore, it becomes very dangerous for cyclists, pedestrians, and others. I know, I've tried to ride bicycles, rollerblades through them, they're very dangerous. The only way to make them partially safe is to really have two roundabouts, as your design shows. You first have a pedestrian circle, and then you have a traffic circle, and it still is confusing and relies on driver decision-making instead of an actual stoplight telling people when they should stop. Unlike a signal, they cannot be adjusted or timed to the traffic flows either that are surging or in the future. So at that particular location, we have no idea what the traffic flow is going to be like there, because you have undeveloped corners. And so therefore, you'll get backups from Route 29 that will stop traffic in all directions. They are also torturous to passengers who are sitting in the vehicle, being buffeted back and forth. Automakers do their best to the engineers to reduce head toss, but you'll be contributing to head toss for your passengers who, you know, are in the back as drivers bob and weave through roundabouts and bolt bouts throughout the city. They require larger footprints and more expenses, and another thing that we've recently experienced is some significant snowfall. So we need to rethink the maintenance and safety of both roundabouts and brick sidewalks. Both of them pose a real danger to pedestrians and cyclists, and I would hate to see that they cause any death or dismemberment, because these are completely new. You know, it might be one thing in a smaller location, like up the street, where there's a three-way stop behind Harris Teters at Gundry and Annandale, that would have made better sense for a roundabout, because it's only a three-way direction, but to put this in a major intersection in the city is going to cause some real problems, either traffic-wise or pedestrian-wise. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you, and we have Matisse Johnson.
I'm here for my Global Politics IA, and a public comment is one of my activities. I reside at 201 South Oak Street, and I'd like to give a comment on an opportunity that will transform and grow Falls Church for the better. I've noticed how much this city takes pride in its inclusion opportunities and growth, and I'd like to see Falls Church become a more immigrant-friendly city. Immigrants are more than just new members of our society. They are entrepreneurs, professionals, parents, and most importantly, dreamers. There are just two impactful ways that I would like to share today that might just turn this vision into a reality. Number one, there should be more jobs for immigrants in Falls Church. Falls Church should partner with immigrant... With organizations like North Virginia's Family Service, a non-government organization that provides employment training and career counseling to immigrants. The city should also incentivize small businesses in Falls Church to hire immigrants by offering maybe tax breaks or grants. And we could provide regular workshops in Falls Church with a partnership with the Fairfax County Skill Source Centers. These centers cover everything from job skills and resume writing to interview prep for immigrants. Secondly, there should be an expectation to provide more affordable housing. I think that if we want to increase immigrant contribution of Falls Church, it is only fair if we let them live here, too. I know Falls Church is a small county, and housing is very expensive, but in order to be a better city, equal housing opportunities shouldn't go overlooked. Falls Church could work with developers and nonprofits to not only continue to provide, but to improve our Affordable Dwelling Unit, ADU, program. I see plenty of new apartment buildings being made, and I think that if it's possible, we can make sure that some of the units in the new projects are marketed towards immigrants and refugees. How can this be done? I think that partnerships with NGOs, non-government organizations, will be a catalyst to Falls Church being an immigrant-friendly city. NGOs are flexible with government collaboration and are community-driven, with passionate staff who often have a deep understanding and firsthand experience that apply directly in their field. Such collaborations with NGOs help not only to improve the quality of life for immigrants, but also to reduce the demand for public services. Collaboring with NGOs is cost-efficient. NGOs often operate on tight budgets and are extremely resourceful when operating. In supporting and partnering with them, Falls Church can leverage existing infrastructure and expertise without having to take on full financial burden of creating new programs from scratch. Finally, let's not forget that immigrants' residents are essential to Falls Church's economy. When NGOs help immigrants find jobs and financial stability, they quickly integrate into the local economy. They pay their taxes, support local businesses, and bring new entrepreneurial ideas to the city. Working with NGOs on such opportunities is not only compassionate, but it's a smart economic policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Matisse, we were really impressed with all the research you did and your comments, so good luck with your IA and your IB diploma. Any other comments?
That's all I have, signed up for tonight. Thank you.
I was just going to add for Matisse, I know that we have council members who are also members of Welcoming Falls Church, and that's a wonderful local organization along with others that's especially involved in, you know, making sure that we're helping immigrant refugee families acclimate to the city. So I'm sure members of council or members of Welcoming Falls Church would also be willing to speak with you further about their efforts.
Well, I know that we likely will have council requests in response to some of the public comments, and so let's start with those, and then I don't know if the manager wants to give updates on those, just so that members of the audience don't have to see through all the council requests? If that would be okay with my colleagues up here to... Yes. Okay, thank you.
So I'll just have two things to report on, and I'll start with the baseball field, and then I'll speak a little bit about the recent snow emergency. With respect to the baseball field, I do want to report that I met with the school's team today to discuss a path forward for the baseball field. It is my understanding that the school superintendent will be meeting with the school board tomorrow night, and will have information to share for the school board at that meeting in terms of a plan going forward for the baseball field. And in addition, there is a meeting planned with the baseball parents this week on Wednesday. This is a school project, and so I do want to defer to the school leadership to communicate what the plans are moving forward for the upcoming season and for the field as well. And so I'll defer to the superintendent for that. I do want to just share that at our meeting today with school administration, we were joined by building safety staff, planning staff, school's project manager, and school leadership, and the goal of the meeting was to ensure that when the school administration articulates this plan to go forward... this plan to go forward, that the communication with the general government staff is all in place, and that from a permitting perspective and from any other aspects that the general government needs to be involved in, we're prepared to help the school team accomplish what they're laying out to do. We have a great deal of success in recent years. General government and school staff have worked together, I think, very effectively to accomplish some really important and major projects, to complete them safely and successfully, including, of course, the Meridian High School, but many other important school improvement projects. So I'm confident that we'll be able to do that with respect to the baseball field as well. And I acknowledge the disappointment that the community feels, that the players, the parents, the fans, the community at large, with the news about the baseball field. I think there'll be more to come, and I think that it will be very helpful for people to see a path forward. So I wanted to just report out on that. I do think at the end of the day, that the school team is going to be able to deliver is a world-class, I think, a really great baseball facility, and we want to help with that. So that's my report on the baseball field. I'd be happy to answer any questions on that. And then the second thing to just report on with respect to snow, and that is really just as a public service announcement, one, to thank everyone who did contribute to shoveling their sidewalks. It's really important for this city, who's on the move, on foot, on bicycle, and in vehicles. So thank you for those who did that. For those who were not able to, please be aware that it is city policy that within six hours after snowfall stops, that businesses are out to clear sidewalks in front of their businesses, and that the community as a whole, residents, have 12 hours after snowfall stops to clear their sidewalks. We've also been discussing with our public work staff, who we have gotten a lot of very favorable feedback, which is much appreciated in terms of the work of staff to clear the streets and the sidewalks at city facilities, and comments about sometimes pushing that snow right where it blocks sidewalks' access to the street. That is something that our DPW staff are very alive to and are working to change some of their techniques and their tactics, particularly when they're widening up the snow in the intersections, about where they put that snow, to be mindful of sidewalks. That's a work in progress, but that is something that we are working on, and it is very important to us. So those are two things I wanted to report on tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Downs?
Thank you so much, Mr. Shields. This is more of a comment than a question. And, you know, it's interesting because one of my last official acts on school board was to approve the $2 million for this baseball field. And as a baseball parent as well, this obviously is something that is of interest to me in particular. But I would just say that I, you know, and I know that you had sent me some information about sort of the timeline of it, and I'm not wanting to point fingers or anything like that. But it does seem between this project, and then also when I was on school board, we had a delayed opening of the front entrance of Oak Street Elementary. And so I think, and I don't know, but at the time, there seemed to be blaming on permit issues. But I think it might be good in the future when we have these really big projects with the school to just sort of sit down months and months. It's terrific that you met with the schools today, and I know you have a really good relationship with Dr. Noonan. But I think on both sides, city and schools, there's staff turnover, and things can get, you know, lost. And so I think sitting down, getting all the players in the room, and really setting up a timeline that everyone understands for those deadlines. And so I know that you've, you know, you've done a great job meeting with Dr. Noonan, and I know that this is, you know, goes both ways. But, you know, the baseball parents are frustrated, and, you know, I think it is a shame because, and again, I'm not placing blame on either side, but I think just it might be something, just better communication, both from the schools and from the city, might solve some of these future sort of headaches about this. But thank you for working and trying to get us, get everything back on track. I really appreciate it.
Well, I appreciate those comments. And, you know, we want to do, right now, the focus is what's the path forward, and how can we help that? There does need to be a sit-down also and just assess what happened here. And we will do that as well. I will note that after the Oak Street School, which was frustrating, we did sit down and try to lay out schedules and try to improve that communication, and yet we still had this issue. So there was intent, and the results didn't match the intent. And so why? What structurally do we need to change so this doesn't, you know, we don't have these issues in the future? Right now, the focus is on the path forward, but we will do that assessment.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. I really appreciate you being so candid. Thank you.
Great. And just one more comment. I think it's also good to remember that we did have an example of a really good collaboration. We pulled off the brand-new high school together, right? And that was clearly a huge project. And so maybe there was a lesson learned on how we worked together in that project and kept it on time. Obviously, it was during COVID times, but maybe we can pull lessons learned from there and figure out how to apply it on much smaller-scale projects, ensure that tight collaboration happens there as well. Let's remember the good that happens, too. Okay? Other comments?
Sure. Madam Mayor, thanks. Yeah, and I hope that as we're reviewing what happened here, if there are any process improvements for the future, that we'll apply those. Thanks.
Okay. Other council requests?
Just to tag one more thing on there in terms of the communications, I was, it was interesting that it came to light during a Wrecks and Parks, you know, that meeting happened, and then all there's a flurry of calls and activity. And so I think part of that postmortem is communications and, you know, how these bumps in the road are communicated to schools and to city council, just so we could get in early and try to help where we can and process some procedure and move forward, you know, collaboratively and grow in the same direction. Thanks.
Ms. Lynn?
I just had a comment where I wanted to say thank you to staff on something that I know of Wrecks and Parks and DPW and the city generally. After our discussions about the HVAC Community Center project, did want to be more proactive about communication, and I think that that generally has gone well in terms of, you know, the notice in the Wrecks and Parks mailers, when the program catalog went out, and the updates as part of the morning announcements, and when the fencing went up, the on-fence, you know, descriptions of the project. And so from our perspective of being close by there, you know, we do kind of see the change in movement and people adapting to the project pretty quickly. And so I just wanted to thank the city on those efforts.
Well, thank you. And if I could just take the cue, I should have reported out, we've started work on the Community Center HVAC and geothermal upgrades. We have completed three wells, I believe. You probably know exactly how many we've completed. And for the public's information, the Community Center still is open. You can walk around the fences and access the Community Center, and that will be the case for the coming weeks. We've laid out a schedule on the city website as to the different phases of the project. But the wells, what they are for is they will be part of the cooling system and the heating system, where we're essentially using the earth as the heat sink for our HVAC system as opposed to the atmosphere. It is significantly more efficient to do it this way. It is a larger upfront investment, but will provide dividends and lower operating costs and a quieter system for the public for many years to come. So thank you for noting that that project is now underway.
Okay. Other council requests? Ms. Connolly?
I'm wondering if Mr. Patillo sent us a message and also spoke about Hillwood Avenue, and I'm just wondering, you know, we've heard about Hillwood in the past, and we know about the accidents that occurred there. Is that a street that qualifies for neighborhood traffic calming because it's a secondary street? Are there other things that could be done that would not require the neighborhood traffic calming process?
So we are encouraging the community to go through the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Project program largely because we think the interventions that would be called for will be likely to be extensive. And so the NTC provides the best way to engage the community on what those might be, and it's a process we all know and are familiar with as opposed to sort of inventing a different type of process. And so while it is kind of cumbersome on the upfront side in terms of the petitioning process, it does allow us then to work with the community on some design options in an organized way. And when we arrive at those design decisions, they're oftentimes not universally popular, and it gives us a process to work through towards a decision so that we can then construct.
I'm just wondering, just thinking about the Greenway Downs project, there were certain parts of that project that were decided by city staff that the neighborhood had no way to weigh in on.
That's right.
And the neighborhood didn't always agree with them, but that was the staff decision. And I'm wondering if there's anything on Hillwood Avenue where the same thing could happen, where there are things that could be done that the neighborhood would not have any say in that would make the street safer.
That's a very good point. And I will note that maybe one difference with that project was the fact that that was funded with a VDOT grant, and there were certain improvements that we thought would be aligned with that grant, that we needed to move forward with administratively. This is a little bit more of kind of an open exploration of options without a grant behind it at this point. This would be funded through the NTC program, and so the solutions are, I think, kind of more open that the community can weigh in on. So that's one difference between the two.
And did Greenway Downs also start with a petition, though?
It did. And then we took those petitions, and we were getting petitions from various different streets, and so we got a pretty large grant, $600,000, and put all the petitions together, and then kind of worked it that way.
So there was still a signal from the community that, yes, let's start this process?
That is correct.
Let's invest resources to start. Now, whether what those are still could be administrative or could be through a more extensive process, but we need the signal from the community to prioritize this against all the other requests we get.
That is true.
Okay.
So then my last question on this one is, is there a staff member who can work with Mr. Patillo and the other members of Hillwood Avenue that have decided to work together on this to make sure that they are able to put in their petition quickly and get things moving?
Yes, and we'll do that. And as Mr. Patillo noted earlier, there might be kind of multiple groups working on this. And one thing that I think we could do is to try to organize that with you so we're not working at cross purposes or having more confusion on the street. And so we'll reach out to you to see if we can coordinate that and have a kind of an organized way forward. It is a long street, and there might be, you know, we might want to divide the street up into sections, but we could talk with the community about how to do that.
Yeah. I just want to jump in here. One of the things that I specifically remember when I was campaigning was I had three different neighbors on Hillwood specifically mention their cars getting hit. So I just thought that was very interesting, that three different, you know, through downhill wood. So there's definitely some, you know, issues there.
Just, can I just jump in on this one, too? To me, and I think I've said this before, I don't know in what context, but it seems to me, and I think as we know from the crash data, right, that the city, in certain circumstances, and maybe Hillwood is one of them, or stretches of Hillwood, whether it's the piece of Hillwood from west closer to Seven Corners, may be a place where we can be proactive or should be proactive, and that it shouldn't take, you know, a neighborhood where we can identify, you know, significant issues to request city attention as opposed to our being proactive about addressing issues even in advance of this. So I would just ask for continued communication, both with the police department, as I know has been ongoing, and then, you know, to think creatively, as I think Ms. Connolly and other council members are asking, to maybe intervene sooner rather than later, given issues we've now seen multiple times on that stretch.
Dave?
Thanks. So I think the council and the city administration are scheduled to take up Vision Zero as part of our priorities. And I think that would really offer us an opportunity to take a look at all the tools that are available to us, all the different procedures, to determine where we can be more rapidly responsive. There are a couple key limitations, courtesy of Richmond. The number-one limitation is electronic speed enforcement. There's only one place in the city of Falls Church where we're permitted under Virginia law, and that's within the St. James area, and we are implementing that. As part of our legislative program, we are urging, to the extent that we possibly can, are urging the expansion of electronic speed enforcement capabilities, but so far, the General Assembly has rejected that. And we'll be back this legislative session asking for that, because I do note that one of the things you commented on was the speeding. Another thing we might want to look at is there some sort of signage, if you will, or something at the Seven Corners area that can be useful in speed reduction as well, or at least signaling, if you're going to speed, do it somewhere else, don't do it here, or better yet, don't do it anywhere. But I'm hoping that we can look at what the tools are and options are that we currently have to see if there's some tools that are available to us to be more responsive more rapidly. And I will say, it is bad on Hillwood. It's also bad in the rest of the city, which doesn't mean that we shouldn't, it means even more urgent action is needed. At my intersection, for example, there was a crash. The car totaled two, went across three yards, totaled two vehicles, ran across another street and ended up stopped before it hit a house. So, and that's just one intersection, and we're hearing the same thing all across the city. So thanks for bringing this to our attention, and we're going to stay on this, and thank you.
Any other comments on this one?
Just another on the other, the comments that came in, written comments. Did someone reach out to Ms. Chen to let her know that there was not a...
I sent it to the drains wall office.
Okay. Very good. And the Founders Road bump out? Did someone reach out to him? I'm not quite sure where the description of that bump out is.
It's the new crosswalk, the mid-block crosswalk across from Taco Bell. There's a curb extension to allow for better pedestrian visibility for that crosswalk.
Okay.
But yeah, I did reach out to him to say, did anyone respond to you? And he said, "Not yet."
So, okay. Could someone respond to him, please?
Yeah, I'm not recalling that email, but I will...
So I think the idea was that with the bump out, that...
I'm familiar with the bump out.
You're making a right, and what he is saying is that you're almost going into oncoming, I mean, this is his description, that you're almost going into oncoming traffic because you have to make such a wide turn.
Right.
So I guess maybe someone from city might have to, you know, go over there and take a look.
Yeah. So this is on Southwest Street, and there is a, right at Founders Road, too, right? This is what we're talking about. Yeah, we're doing all of the inspections on the as-bilts, but I believe that was constructed per plan. There will be another one on the other side of the street to narrow down the street. That is what traffic calming is. They always do provoke responses, you know, both pro and con, but that is what, you know, that's generally what these design changes are.
One other thing, I just wanted to thank you and your team for the great snow removal. I know someone wrote in about to thank you, but I'll say that was interesting, the final day that the schools were closed, they were really actually more closed because the majority of the staff live outside Falls Church City, and their systems were closed, so they had no childcare. So that was really a big piece of why that final day the schools were closed. It wasn't a reflection on how we prepared our streets. So just kudos to you. I think we were much, much more ahead of our surrounding communities. So thanks to you and your staff.
And I also appreciate the school administration, because I think in their statement on it, they made that very clear, and that was noted.
Much of this may have our own kids. We did not, we were still ahead one day compared to much of the region. But yes, thank you, and that's no response. Ms. Andrew Hill?
I received a note in the mail about block parties and how to schedule them. And on that mailer, it also said that we were eliminating play streets. Do you have an update as to why that's happening?
Well, so they're sort of effectively the same thing as a block party and a play street, and so having two different forms was confusing to people. And so we wanted to have just kind of one process. The play street was kind of nice for branding, but it was essentially the same request. And so that's the reason why.
Okay. So if somebody, I guess, has done a play street in the past, they would still be able to do a similar thing going forward?
Absolutely. Yeah, and we would just call it a, you know...
A block party.
And we would do the exact same... And we would do the exact same things to support it.
Okay. And then I also received a note from a neighbor about the fire hydrant and where fire hydrants are getting placed, specifically for somebody where a fire hydrant is getting placed in front of their house and losing parking in that area. Is there any flexibility to be able to shift some of these fire hydrants a little bit to preserve some of those spaces?
So that always is an issue with fire hydrants. We can take it up. If you want to forward that address to us, we can take a look at it. Generally, we do try to place them kind of on a lot line between two houses where that's possible, but sometimes there's other considerations that might make that difficult. But we can go through the individual case.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I had some things. So thank you for the comments on snow removal. Definitely plus one for DPW snow response. And I'm glad, Mr. Shields, you talked about the importance of accessibility and walkability for all modes of transportation year round because I did see plenty of wheelchairs, strollers, people who are getting around by foot that couldn't. And so I really just ask that we all pitch in as a community on that. On Hillwood, as I told Mr. Patillo in person, I'm a regular on Hillwood because I run on your street. I know it's very unsatisfying to be told, go through the petition process, but that is the fairest way for us to tackle these things. I will plus one all the comments we've made so far about how to be more proactive because as I take a step back, Hillwood is not the only street we hear from. I was in a meeting before the holidays with Southwest. Other week it was with Nolan. Every street is talking about, you know, street safety and concerns about speeding. And so I would ask systemically, like, what can we do to make this better? And then secondly, I would like us, as we approach budget season this spring, to think about speed and throughput of our response. Because I think our role up here, beyond frankly nagging staff and asking staff, can we do more on this and this and this, is making sure we put enough resources against it. So I would love a report out of how we're doing in terms of the delivery of the traffic calming cases, the rapid response team, and whether we should be doing more in the next budget season to augment those efforts because pedestrian safety sidewalks continue to be really the top thing we hear from. And I think our role in this is to make sure we have the right resources and the right number of resources and remove the roadblocks for our teams to deliver those for the community. So that's something that I ask my colleagues to keep in mind is that we can keep a one-off kind of, what is it called, whack-a-moleing each of these issues and we can make sure that we have processes to address these. But ultimately, I think we just need to make sure we have enough resources to go against these big concerns we're hearing from the community. So that's kind of my speech on that one. On that note, sidewalks, March 10th is a big meeting because as scheduled, that is the Vision Zero discussion as well as the sidewalk plan discussion. I know I've been harping on this one since last fall, but I believe we finally have the master sidewalk lists. I wanted to confirm for both my colleagues' understanding as well as community understanding, is that sidewalk plan just to talk about the brick standards or is that where we can talk about that master list of sidewalk needs, what needs repair, what are missing links? And ideally, again, before the budget process, so we can talk about whether we're allocating enough dollars towards sidewalks. So that's a question for staff of what the intention of that item is, given so much community interest. Is it both a standards discussion and a like missing links prioritization process?
Well, it is generally the design for the new model in lieu of the existing streetscape standard. That's what was envisioned for that discussion. The sidewalk, missing links plan, you know, that is out there. It is, we can discuss that, but that, you know, that's something we will be looking at on a regular basis to refresh it in the same way that we refresh our paving list.
Okay. I guess ideally, if we're talking about Vision Zero complete streets, that seems like a really good time to talk about our sidewalk plan. Again, to make sure that we have enough resources. Well, one, I want to be transparent with the community of here's all the requests we have, both to repair sidewalks and putting in the missing links. And then two, here's how many we can get done realistically in a budget cycle. And does that feel okay? Because that feels like a more transparent way of discussing it rather than fielding all these incoming requests and say, yeah, 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 we know, we'll get to you, right? That's not very satisfying. So I know Mr. Young is here.
So I think, building on the city manager's comments, so our intent is in March to have an update, to go through the CACT on the missing link sidewalk list. Are they prioritized appropriately and what staff is proposing to do for the next year with the resources we have on chipping away at that list? I think each one of those missing links is a missing link for a reason. There are challenges, so the staff's trying to work through those and our intent is to have an update on that list in March.
Okay. Well, ideally, if we can do that March 10th one, that feels like a really good wholesome transportation discussion on Vision Zero, complete streets, sidewalk standards.
It's a lot.
Be really fun.
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Two more things. One, we had a community question about Wallace striping. So I know that there was a change to Wallace Street to make it one way, but I think the striping still has a double yellow. Is that, which usually signals a two-way street? Is that intentional? Is that something that was an error that we're correcting?
Let me get back with you on that.
Okay.
I don't have the answer to that. Yep. Andy has the information.
We're glad you're here, Andy.
So the striping on Wallace Street isn't done, I think is kind of what, you know, we talked about this afternoon. So there's some special green paint that's going to go on the new bike lane on the one side of the street. And I think with the weather and everything else, that hasn't been done yet. So it's still somewhat of a work in progress and I think we recognize it's a little incomplete and not quite right. So we're working to get that fixed.
Got it. So rest assured, not a final product, but is intended to be a one-way street.
It is a one-way street, correct.
Great. And the last one is the WOD crossings. Do we have line of sight to a resolution for the lighting issue there?
Cindy, do you have the latest on that?
The last communication I had with the project manager, they are, our project manager and Dominion are in the field and working on the redesign, but it hasn't been finalized yet. Since we know the poles will have to be moved, our city project manager has reached out to Dominion to fill the old holes in and make it safe and secure. But just prior to the holidays, they were working on it and didn't have a revised timeline yet.
Kind of like the baseball field, this is one where it's disappointing because we were so close to the finish line. But I also would like to understand in a postmortem, how did they get approved? And then now Dominion's going back and saying, just kidding, it's not approved and we need you to move the poles. So happy to have that conversation. Okay. Any other comments or requests? Vice Mayor?
I just had a quick one. Again, kudos to the snow delivery. I think I had multiple people say, you know, as soon as I left Falls Church City, I had troubles with the roads. It was amazing what was done well in Falls Church and certainly in comparison to our neighboring jurisdictions. On that list of things that people like to talk about or ask you about as a city council member is the remaining leaves that are now under that snow pile. And I've gotten several, you know, they're highlighted because they're now snow covered and might have impeded, you know, some traffic along the way in the snowplow as well. So could you just confirm, do we have another, once it thaws, do we have another pickup or is it street cleaning or what? How are those big piles addressed?
So yeah, when, they can't be addressed now and probably won't be able to be next week so long as it's, we're in the deep freeze. But once they are loosened up and thawed out, then we will do a final sweep through the city. That's what the plan was to do the week up to the eighth and the snow interrupted that.
Thank you for confirming.
Okay. Great. With that, let's get to business on the agenda. Madam Clerk, can you call the first item, please?
Yes, we have one item that requires a public hearing this evening, and that is TR 25-04, Resolution to Initiate Condemnation Proceedings for City Acquisition of the Following: 1,090 square feet in fee simple for permanent public right-of-way, 161 square feet for a permanent site distance easement, and 1,905 square feet for a grading and temporary construction easement, all situated on real property located at 140 South Maple Avenue in the City of Falls Church owned by V-Bowl Falls Church LLC.
So Mayor Hardy and members of council, this item is appearing twice on the agenda tonight. One is with respect to this request for a condemnation proceeding. And then later in the agenda is a request for a contract approval with Arden Construction to construct the roundabout. What we'd like to do, and there are sort of two different parts of the agenda, is provide a quick summary of the project, an overview of the project. I'll turn it over to Mr. Young and our project manager, Scott Freida, for that overview. Then we'll turn it over to the city attorney for a briefing on this condemnation proceeding. And we'd ask for the council's action on the condemnation proceeding. We do recognize that there'll be discussion and questions about the project itself. And we're suggesting that we have that conversation in the context of the contract approval, which is later on the agenda, sort of separate them in that way, if that's acceptable to the city council.
Okay.
Okay. So in terms of the overview, I'll just make a quick introduction for this project. This roundabout project is one that has been in the city's planning documents for a long time. It first appeared in the, as a concept in the 2005 Comprehensive Plan Amendment, the Transportation Chapter. And in 2007, the city did a city center transportation plan, the entire purpose of which was to come up with solutions to make the entire downtown commercial area more walkable and safer for pedestrians and a more vibrant retail environment. We hired a consultant that walked us through some options. We had design charrettes, we had walking tours, we had all the things that the City Falls Church does on big planning efforts like that. And one of the exciting proposals that came out of that planning effort in 2007 was a roundabout at this location. Since that time, it's been reaffirmed in the city's planning documents. And we'll, with the overview, will articulate some of the general safety improvements and pedestrian amenities that are associated with this design, which are the reason for the project. The, I think those are the kind of the key things I just wanted to note, that the city council did also last review this in 2022, in January of 2022, after we had applied for and received grants for the design and construction of this project, to discuss, do we want to go down the path of the roundabout or do we want to go down the path of a signalized intersection? With that briefing, the consensus of council was for the benefits of pedestrian safety in particular, as well as efficient throughput and sort of the overall efficiency of a roundabout design to proceed in that direction. So now we're before you, we've been working for a very long time to try to get the right-of-way for this project. And the last project we've really, a corner of the project that we've struggled with is the Bolero corner of the project to secure the right-of-way at that location. And so that is the reason why we're requesting initiation of the condemnation proceedings. With that introduction then, we'll turn it directly over to Mr. Freida, who is our project manager for the project. He has just a graphic that will help us understand the project and provide an overview. And this is also Mr. Freida's first appearance before the city council, and it's good to have you here with us tonight. But Scott has managed several projects for the city that are underway right now and appreciate his service to the city.
Thank you. There it is. All right, thanks, thank you Wyatt for that introduction. I appreciate it. As he said, my name is Scott Freida. I'm a capital improvement project manager here for the Department of Public Works. And the South Maple Avenue and Annandale Road Roundabout Project is my project and I'm responsible for seeing it through its inception all the way through to the construction phase. So as Wyatt said, this project was last presented to the council on January the 18th of 2022. That's when we presented to get the rev share funding approved for this that we are sharing with VDOT as far as the funding to get the project completed from design all the way through to construction. I'll give you a quick little background also, even though Wyatt did give a really good one. The Department of Public Works has identified the existing signalized intersection of South Maple Avenue and West Annandale Road for improvements. Two options for the improvements were considered. Option one was an upgrade to the standard signalized intersection with improved pedestrian facilities. Option two was a roundabout intersection. Both options have been evaluated to determine the best design fit for this intersection and the surrounding area. As you can see right now, that's a photo, sorry, that's a drawing of the actual roundabout option that was chosen. So I'm kind of backtracking here for a second. When considering safety, traffic flow, environmental impacts, construction costs and maintenance costs, city staff chose to move forward with the roundabout option. The roundabout option has a higher initial capital cost, but it will decrease future maintenance costs. Furthermore, it's overall more in keeping with the city's guidelines for streetscapes as described in the City of Falls Church Design Guidelines. Where this project currently stands is the 100% design is complete and we've received construction contract bids on August the 2nd of 2024, this past summer. Those contract bids are good for 180 days. So in order for us to keep those contract bids intact, we must award this contract by February 4th of 2025, just less than a month away. The project requires four right-of-way acquisitions, one on each of the corners of the intersection. One of those corners is basically complete, waiting for final pending of assigned paperwork. We have paperwork out for two more right-of-way corners that are almost final. But tonight, we're here to discuss the fourth, the fourth right-of-way acquisition for the V-Bowl Falls Church site. We have engaged with representatives of the property since July of 2023, a little over a year now, almost 18 months. References to the community, the communications logs are in your staff report. They have, the minimum communications we've had with them have been positive, but they just don't talk with us. And they have made no counteroffer for an additional cost for acquisition for that property. So with that, I'm going to turn over this talk to our counsel, our legal counsel regarding how the certificate of take will occur. Courtney Harden?
Yes. Thank you. Hi, good evening. My name is Courtney Harden and I am what you would call outside counsel. I specialize in eminent domain work and have for 20 years. I also represent VDOT, Town of Herndon, Fairfax County, working always with condemning authorities through this process, which can be full of hoops. That is what we call it, full of hoops here in Virginia. Virginia is the most property owner friendly state in our United States. And whereas we have 25 hoops that, well, we, the city must jump through, West Virginia has five. So there are a lot of obligations that a city has to go to before they can bring a matter to you to even ask for this. And your city staff has done all of that. They had a, they had a certified appraisal to make a fair market valuation. That was part of the original offer letter as well as a 60-year title report. When there was no response to that, it was updated, another set of offers were made. There has been no response from the landowner other than, sure, we got it and, excuse me, but no counteroffer. So no meaningful negotiations have started. There are timelines under our statutes with regards to being able to provide a landowner with notice and then file what's called a certificate of take. Because this is a traffic project, it's automatically a public purpose, which means that the city can use a quick take procedure. The notice went to the landowner at, on January 3rd, that there would be 30 to 45 days a certificate of take would be filed. Once that certificate is filed, then the county can start its work. It does not mean that we have agreed to price. It means the county, the city has made a bona fide offer and there's been no negotiation and response. The project needs to move forward. There are mechanisms in the statutes that allow the city to do that. Negotiations can continue between the date of the certificate of take and the date that the city would be required to file what's called a petition and condemnation. That's the actual lawsuit. There's 180 days in there. And if there's still no negotiation back and forth, then the city would proceed. This is the standard procedure and a lawsuit would go forward and there would be a trial by other land. by other landowners in the City of Falls Church. That is how a determination is made as to what the fair market value is. I just wanted to make sure, if you had any questions about the condemnation process, I'm here to answer.
Okay. Are we ready for council questions, or do we have more staff?
We're ready to entertain questions from council. Thank you.
Great. Ms. Underhill?
Thank you for that. I noticed on the staff report, it said fiscal impact. The fiscal impact of acquiring property through the condemnation proceedings, as opposed to voluntary conveyance, is estimated to be about $50,000. And then it goes on to mention the $134,000 amount. Could you explain what that $50,000 is for?
When you go to trial in an eminent domain matter, it becomes a battle of the experts. So there is no liability. As I said, this is automatically a public purpose, obviously. You have a requirement to build roads to your citizens and constituents. However, it is helpful always to other landowners to understand exactly what fair market value would be for a property situated on a corner that is commercially zoned, that is this size, that has this much parking. So you would hire an appraisal expert, they would hire an appraisal expert. If necessary, there might be engineering experts or land planners. Generally speaking, it's just the appraisers. But between the attorney's fees and expert fees, that would be the cost.
Okay. And if they don't respond, would it even go to trial? Or would there even be, would anything happen?
It has to. The only way that, so at the date the certificate of take is filed, de-feasible title is transferred, which means you can start working on it, you can do the whole project, but it's not final final until there's a final amount. Oftentimes, big corporations are the hardest to get to engage because they might think this is little in their world. But when they are formally served with a lawsuit, then they do tend to engage. Settlement occurs 95% of the time after the petition is filed and before the trial occurs. But if it doesn't, and they never show up, then we go in on a hearing, present the appraisal evidence that we made a fair market offer, the judge would make a determination and enter an order giving indefeasible title.
And so if they do, after they get served papers, and then they respond, then that $50,000 charge would come down because we wouldn't need to hire the experts and go through the whole trial and everything?
Presuming that they agree with our-
Agree with what price? Yes, okay. Do we have to offer, if it does go to court, do we have to offer fair market value?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Other questions?
Have we thoroughly explored every option to commencing condemnation? Because that's something that we've rarely done here, and it's a last resort rather than a first resort. So let me ask staff, city attorney, retain counsel, are there any other steps we can take to work with the businesses rather than commencing this legal proceeding?
I would just say, we've been at it for 18 months, as Mr. Freida announced or reported. And we are now at the point of losing the contractual documents that we've already put out to bid. And so it would be very expensive. We're kind of right up against the deadline now. I think we've exhausted all normal means, and that's why we're before you tonight.
The only thing that I would add is, as I mentioned, I do this all the time. And I was wildly impressed that there were 50 emails exchanged, two face-to-face meetings, two meetings over Teams, five letters mailed. No response. No substantive response. There was always an acknowledgement that it had been received, and oh, we'll get to it, and we'll work on it. My sense, that's very unusual in this circumstance. They've just been, this particular landowner's been rather nonchalant about the process.
Could I follow up on that? So I did read through the log of communications, so thank you to staff for providing that. It sounds like January 2nd, 2025, was the first time that the point of contact we had told us that he was not the right point of contact after a series of communications. I guess legally, does that mean that we have to restart the process from that point on, or all the previous communications count?
All the previous communications count. We, all of our letter communications that are the real triggers under the statutes have all been sent the exact way that they're supposed to be sent, to the address of record, to the owner. This gentleman was identified himself 12 months ago as the primary point of contact. And so it was, it was very interesting that he then turned around and said, we're just the tenant, you have to speak to the owner, a venture capital firm that nobody has ever engaged with thus far.
Got it. And then a question on the 1,100 square feet that's up for debate. Does that impact the parking lot, or is it really just that corner sidewalk? Like, how does this impact the property?
It doesn't reduce anything as far as their parking lot's concerned. During the construction, we will temporarily remove 20 parking spaces from the Bolero site, but it will, but the actual finished product will not remove any parking spaces from their site.
And is that cost of the 20 impacted spaces included as part of the process? Or do they expect to be compensated in some other way for that?
That one might be mine.
Yeah.
So in talking about Virginia being a property owner-friendly state, we are one of the few states that allows lost profits. So the loss of parking could be addressed in two different ways. They could either come back and make an argument that there's damages to the remainder for the loss of park, to the physical remainder in a temporary way during the construction. Or they might make a lost profits claim and say, during this time, 20 less people were able to come in for that construction period. They have the burden of proof either way, but they have the option, it's available to them, should they feel that they are damaged. There's no obligation on the condemning authority to try to anticipate what someone's lost profits are. There would be no way for us to do that. So that's something that, again, that's the burden on the landowner.
We're also paying them for the temporary easement.
Oh, right. So yes, we are paying them for the temporary construction easement. So that's almost like a rental value for the property, because we're standing on it, we're regrading on it while we're working, or even staging on it. And then that automatically reverts back to them at the end of the project.
Okay. Other questions?
So I, yeah, I guess I have a comment, and maybe it dovetails with Mr. Snyder's question. You know, I'm going to support tonight the initiation of the condemnation proceedings. I understand where we are timing-wise. I understand kind of the pretty extraordinary power that the locality has in terms of this quick take condemnation power. I will say, it is kind of remarkable that this is our second, you know, hearing on condemnation proceedings. I understand we're in different positions, right? The VDOT's conversation that you were also a part of was because of how protracted those discussions and negotiations had become, and this is because of sort of the funding and timing issues. But I do have a general concern, kind of that we don't get comfortable with the idea of in thinking about our transportation projects, or in thinking about kind of how we might increase revenue, or sort of increase economic development by the appearance of our downtown, for example, that we are not being overly aggressive in terms of how we're thinking about the city's condemnation authority, especially when we're thinking about things like the Broad Street multimodal project, where there are lots of kind of right-of-way negotiations and acquisition discussions that are going to have to take place. And I would reasonably anticipate that we're going to be back here talking about possible condemnation proceedings or initiating condemnation. And although we're kind of invoking a public purpose, my understanding and taking some kind of condemnation generally is that there's normally a necessity determination. And so I do kind of just want the city to be mindful when we're doing these projects upfront, kind of, you know, what is it that we're reasonably doing for constructing, maintaining, repairing roads versus like what it is that we just want sometimes for aesthetic purposes or economic development purposes? And so, you know, anticipate those kind of comments from me going forward if this continues to be somewhat of sort of like an issue in terms of an approach we're taking to kind of street improvements.
If I might, you are 100% correct. There are two different takings procedures in Virginia. What you're referring to right now is called the slow take, and this is the quick take. And you're right, it is an extraordinary power. When I speak about it at different, I speak in front of the eminent domain conference, it is the great compromise. It is, how on earth can you expect a municipality to build the most expensive thing that everybody has to build? And do it efficiently, but not take the land? So there's the issue. Road projects are automatically a public purpose under Virginia statute 1-219.1 as our utilities, et cetera. Oddly, firehouse, not an automatic. You would have to go through the slow take procedure to establish where a firehouse would need to be, so that it couldn't be anywhere else, and then it would have to be there. I agree with you. It is, it is a very, very difficult line. I will say this, that in the 20 years that I've been practicing, I've probably only been to trial 15 times out of thousands of eminent domain cases. They do get settled.
And that's fine, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to make comments, we're arguing against, you know, ourselves. But I just want to put on the record that, you know, it's a functioning intersection. It has been a functioning intersection. We're making improvements to the intersection that we deem necessary. But I just would like for our projects going forward to keep in mind what it is that we can accomplish versus what it is we need right-of-ways to accomplish, and that we don't get too comfortable with the idea of condemning private property to achieve city goals.
Okay. Other comments?
Yeah, I had one more. I think beyond the technicalities of this action and moving forward in condemnation, I think it would be really helpful if we reach out to that business and make positive promises, if you will, about during construction, how we will assist the business to, so that, you know, to function and thrive. It's, it is the bowling alley, right? And that's a regional draw. And I think we, we want to make sure that we act in a way that assists them to the extent that we can. So I'm thinking beyond the technicalities of this, more of a dialogue with that particular business to provide whatever support and assistance we can during and after construction.
Good suggestion. I believe staff has been in touch with the business because they have a permit application in for internal renovations, so they're going through a different part of City Hall already. So we, it's unfortunate that we seem to have a relationship for that, but not for this public improvement project that we want to do. But I think we all share the sentiment that this absolutely is a last resort and something that we definitely don't take lightly. I think in my nine years on council, this happens to be the third condemnation we've ever initiated, too, happens to be in the past year. But this is clearly something that we, again, take very seriously, so we appreciate the staff work on this. We are, sorry, you had one more?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I noted that in the staff report, there, well, I mean, is there any thought that if we made the decision on the 27th, which is the next meeting, we would still make the February 4th deadline? Has there been any communication that would make you think that starting this discussion tonight would then lead to a resolution before having to go this route? No?
No. I mean, our problem is, we can't get a response.
So there's no benefit to, in your opinion, there's no benefit to a delay of another two weeks before making the decision?
It also ran in Arlington now today, so it's been out in the public now, so.
Yeah. And again, with the, with the local people, we have communication. We have things that we work on together. It's getting to the decision maker. We can't seem to penetrate. And so I don't think anything would be gained with a delay.
Okay. Okay, with no more comments up here, we are required to hold a public hearing. So I'm going to see if, I'm going to open the public hearing, see if there are comments about the condemnation initiation. Welcome, Ms. Drolazaness.
Yes, thank you. I guess my comment is a rhetorical question, and that is whether or not an easement or right-of-way would even be needed if you're installing a typical intersection. If not, you're going to a lot of additional expense and litigation to add limited, in my opinion, no benefit. I don't see how you can make the argument that this expense, that adding everything that's in this design plan, including raised sidewalks, this green space, refuge islands, and the like, can lead to lower maintenance. If anything, that's going to require more maintenance in the future than just a typical intersection. So I don't buy that argument that this is going to lead to benefits. Again, I'm speaking from a lived experience, and this is going to be a mistake.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments from public? Have we received any other public comments electronically or virtually?
I have not.
Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing?
Madam Mayor, if I might, I'd like to add one more comment. From the Federal Highway Administration comes the following narrative on roundabouts. Roundabouts are a proven safety countermeasure because they can substantially reduce crashes that result in serious injury or death. Roundabouts can improve safety, promote lower speeds and traffic calming, reduce conflict points, lead to improved operational performance, and meet a wide range of traffic conditions. And there's a lot of research, both public and private, in support of those general comments. We wouldn't be doing this unless the evidence was that it would improve safety and improve operations. And we know that there are backups now that are quite substantial on Maple during several times of the day. So I think our hope is to improve safety and operational efficiency, which is why we're engaged in this. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I guess while we have OCOM here, a request I'll add is that because this will be new for Falls Church, more public education is needed between this one and our HAWK signals is how people behave and how visitors behave. And so we'll look to our communications department to help us do that, because we do know that when we do new things, that we need drivers and residents to all cooperate and make this work. So thank you for that. Okay. Do we have a motion on the resolution to initiate condemnation?
I move to adopt TR 25-04.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Hiscott on the second. Madam Clerk, can you call roll, please?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Shanshiska?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, counsel.
Okay, let's move on to the next item.
Yes, we have TR 25-05, resolution to initiate an amendment to Chapter 10, housing a complete community of the City of Falls Church Comprehensive Plan to Add Affordable, the Affordable Living Policy.
So this item is before council. It's just as the title states, it's to initiate the process. We do have Brendan Woodley, who's on the, joining remotely, as well as Dana Jones. And we'll have a very short staff report, and I think one of the main things to communicate is just about the schedule and next steps in the process that is laid out in the staff report, and to walk the community through that. Mr., and then if there are any questions about what this process is in terms of an initiating resolution, we might refer those to the city attorney to describe those. Mr. Woodley, let me turn it over to you. And Brendan, we're not hearing you yet. If that, I don't know if there's a muting issue. We may be having issues with the audio feed coming in.
Okay. Are you, are you referring to me, Wyatt?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I, I'm, maybe it's my setup. I'm having a hard time hearing.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Wyatt, for the introduction. The resolution before you here tonight is for the council to officially- The resolution before you here tonight is for the council to officially initiate the comprehensive plan amendment process. While much of the work for the affordable living policy update has already commenced, because this policy update is now part of the comprehensive plan, the council should officially pass a resolution for the affordable living policy update work to continue. This policy update updates on a five-year cycle, as you see in your staff report, with the last update being in early 2019. Staff began the latest update about a year ago for this current cycle, following legal review and a scan of comprehensive plans in neighboring jurisdictions. This revision of the affordable living policy update is now recommended by staff to be processed as an update to the comprehensive plan in, or as an amendment to the comprehensive plan in Chapter 10, Housing a Complete Community. This proposed resolution is for the sole purpose of initiating comprehensive plan amendment to include an updated affordable living policy. The substance of the affordable living policy will be addressed in a subsequent meeting, as said forth in the timing section in your staff report below. And I can do my best to take questions.
Okay. We've, the group had recommended, and so if you could just briefly update us on the status of that and where that stands, though I understand it's different than what we're being asked to do tonight.
There were some comments by working.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to follow along in the live feed. So just to give you a quick update, hopefully I caught all of that question because it's a couple seconds behind, but right now, we are take, after presenting it to the council a few weeks back, we are now taking it to various boards and commissions to get feedback on that first draft that we presented a few weeks back. We are also, at the same time, going to be developing a action plan that will be included as, in addition to that first draft, that will comprise the full draft. So once we get those comments, once we get that action plan, we'll bring it back to the council for a final opportunity for comments. We'll take it back to the council, to the boards and commissions for review, and then bring it back to the planning commission for their review, and then, of course, city council for final adoption.
Got it. I think the main public comment that we had gotten in our December meeting was making sure that the Affordable Living Policy Work Group had the opportunity to weigh in on it. And while we are extending the timeline and creating more opportunity, I will just note that the two dates for ALP is TBD. So we just asked that we get those scheduled on the book, because that was the specific comment we got, was they wanted the opportunity to chime in before council did, so. And I believe, well, I know Meredith Anderson also sent us her feedback, so that's helpful. Thanks. Okay. With no further questions or comments, do we have, and actually, just a process note, I guess for, with the city attorney's guidance on comp plan amendments, we should expect more of these initiating resolutions, be kind of the first step we take. And so as we do more of these in the future, this will be more of a habit for us. So it's a little awkward right now, but note that we will endeavor to do it earlier next time. Correct, thank you. Great. So with that, adoption. Sorry, who was that?
I was moving to adopt TR 25-05, sorry.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
You heard Mr. Snyder on the first, on the second.
I missed that, I'm sorry.
Mr. Snyder on the second.
Okay, thank you.
Call roll, please.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Shonciscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, counsel.
Okay, what's next?
Our next item is TR 25-03, resolution endorsing the City of Falls Church fiscal year 2026 to 2031 application for Regional Surface Transportation Program RSTP funds.
And Ms. Sopse is on the virtual meeting. I don't know if she can hear us and give a brief staff report on this.
They're listening on the live feed, so they're a little bit delayed by a few seconds.
So as we're waiting for Ms. Sopse or Ms. Golden, council generally sees one of these resolutions once a year, and it allows us to proceed with a grant application.
Wyatt, this is Caitlin. I think Ally Golden is the lead staff on this item.
Okay, just a brief report. Ms. Golden?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ally Golden. I am the CIP Grants Manager for the City of Falls Church. And tonight, I'll be presenting on the resolution endorsing the City of Falls Church FY 2631 Application for Regional Surface Transportation Program Funds. And this was one of the items that would have also been on the work session agenda without the "so" that we had last week. The request is that city councils requested to review and endorse the city's application for RSTP funds for FY 26 to 31. Our current application requests $650,000 in FY 31 funds to construct, repair, or improve pedestrian bicycle bridge and traffic calming facilities throughout the city. The application was due on the 10th of January, so we have submitted the application. It is also required that we obtain a council resolution endorsing the application and submit that to the NVTA by January 24th. The application is included in the staff report and happy to answer any questions about our application or the request tonight.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Golden. Any questions or comments for staff? With a motion. Ms. Underhill, you had a question?
You mentioned that the application, I didn't see the application as part of our packet, or I guess, oh.
It's attached to the resolution, yeah.
Okay. But I was wondering, and so maybe you could summarize, the $650,000, is that for a specific project in FY 31? Do we have to detail what we are going to spend the money on, or is it a general request for multimodal?
I'm having a hard time with the audio. I believe it was the request, is it for, is it a general request or for something specific?
Yes.
So our request is fairly general, as long as it stays within the, kind of the range of the pedestrian bicycle bridge and traffic calming projects. This is an annual application that the city submits, and the amount is variable each year based on calculations by NVTA. We do have some previous projects, just for a better idea of what the funding is used for, that include, some of the funding was used for Oak Street Bridge replacement, the ongoing bridge inspections program, the W&amp;O D Trail Crossings project, as well as the Broad Street multimodal project.
Great, thank you.
Okay, no further questions or comments. Do we have a motion for this?
Madam Mayor, I move approval of TR 25-03.
Do we have a second?
I'm not sure if there was another question. Wyatt, I can hear your microphone really well. Maybe if Wyatt could repeat any questions.
All right. We're good to go. We just had a motion that was made. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I missed the second.
I think it was Ms. Conley.
Ms. Conley, okay.
Call roll.
Thank you. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Shonciscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, counsel.
Okay, let's move on to TR 25-01, remote participation.
Yes, this is resolution adopting a revised policy for remote participation by city council members in meetings, including council subcommittee meetings. And this policy, in order to participate, use the remote participation allowed by the state, we are now required to adopt this annually, and so this is substantially the same as what you adopted last year.
Okay. Questions, comments? Ms. Hiscott?
And I assume this is the maximum allowable by the state still. There have been no changes at the state level to allow us any more flexibility in this, correct?
That's correct. And if anything changes in the next session in July, then we would readopt it, if you wish to take advantage of anything that changes.
Great. And were there any, we had, and I think it's important to note that I don't think we had any issues in the past year with our meetings in this format and this structure, and we didn't have anybody exceeding this, to my knowledge.
That's correct. Everything was used within the law to allow folks to participate when they couldn't make it to the meetings.
I'd just like to continue to promote, to the extent we can at the state, the maximum amount of flexibility that will allow us to include the highest number of residents in meetings and participating on boards and commissions and potentially even running for council to allow the maximum flexibility, but we currently are at that. So I'll be in support of this. Thanks.
Is there any legislation in the General Assembly to work on increasing the flexibility and that we could throw our support behind?
There are several FOIA and public meeting notices, and I'm just going through the legislation because it was delayed posting, but I'll have some updates for the Legislative Committee in about a week.
Okay, that'd be something I think.
It is in your council legislative program to support such further enhancements.
Ms. Conley?
Thanks. I have two questions. One is just, I want to confirm that all boards and commissions have to adopt this again this year as well. Is that correct? Yes, and that communication has been sent to, it's annually, so if they're on a different cycle of having their annual meetings, they'll do it as the months go by. If they have March organizational meeting, they'll do it in March, yeah. So that was sent out to the staff liaisons. Very good. And then I just want to call our attention to line 24, which is a jarring number, and I feel like this is what we need to work on this year, with council expected to meet approximately 75 times in work sessions, regular sessions, and agenda planning meetings in 2025. That is a lot of meetings, and it seems to me that as a council, we can work to reduce that number.
That, I'll piggyback on that. That was actually my question, because I know we are, our mayor is leading us in that direction, canceling some things. So I didn't know, do we need that paragraph in there? Because it could become inaccurate as we start to try to cut down some meetings. I don't know.
Yeah, it's actually not in the legislation. It's just in the staff report, to give you an idea. And what happens during the year is I'll give you an update if we adjust meanings about how many that each person has used and how many you have left. So I kind of, I keep a chart of that, and probably quarterly, half a year, I'll let you know how that's going. But that's just the estimate from what would be a regular schedule.
Hold that thought for item E2.
Exactly.
Okay. Any other comments before we adopt our electronic meeting? Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
That's fine. I just had a quick question in the actual, I don't know what it is, the policy. So on lines 148 to 150, I don't like take issue at all with the exception for this, but it wasn't clear to me, are we doing this to comport with like the statutory language? Because it seemed to me that the language we were including at 148 to 150 was already subsumed in little two. So I thought, I had read one normally to like go to the member, and two to go to the health status or medical condition of a member of the council member's family, and then little three to go to the physical, you know, out of the area of the meeting, and then four to be the personal matter. So I just didn't know, it seemed like one was now encompassing both the members' like disability or medical condition and that of a person who the member's a caregiver for, when I thought that that was already in two. So it was just kind of a question about, were we introducing some, like any confusion into the?
I think the first one, we, I think there was an assumption made last time we adopted it about that, but I think the first one specifically speaks about disabilities.
Okay.
And the second about medical.
Conditions. That's fine.
Medical conditions.
It's a differentiation between talking about disabilities and medical conditions, and that they're not, one doesn't necessarily capture the other.
Yeah, I think, and that is what was in the template language. And for some reason, it just fell out of the last one. So it covers everything, disability or just a transient medical condition is what we understood.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt TR 25-01.
Second. Ms. Hiscott on the second. Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry, I missed the second as well.
Ms. Flynn.
Ready to call the vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Shonciscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Okay, TR 25-02. Council assignments.
We, TR 25-02 is a resolution to amend council assignments as previously adopted by Resolution 202441. And that is to add, as requested by COG, the position of, for the emergency, COG emergency preparedness council, which I believe has been in action, and Mr. Snyder has been chairing, but it just hasn't been on their list that they've asked us to appoint. So wanted to add that. Everything else remains the same. We usually adopt these every two years or when we have a new council member. We did that recently, but then this request came in.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Snyder, for serving. Do we have a motion or questions for a motion?
I move to adopt TR 25-02.
Second. Ms. Downs on the second. Madam Clerk, call roll, please.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Shonciscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. It passes seven to zero.
Okay, so moving on to consent. Would any members of council like to move anything on consent? It's really just appointments. Okay, I don't see any comments, so does anyone have a motion to move the consent items which include appointments?
As Chair of the Appointments Committee, I just want to thank members of council and the Appointments Committee for very thorough interviewing and vetting of many candidates for the Planning Commission. We had excellent candidates, and it was a difficult decision to select the ones that we did, and we hope that those who were not selected will continue to be involved in the city and apply again in the future. And we're really looking forward to working with the Planning Commission. And there are two new members, and then reappointing three who have been there before. Thank them for their work.
Good comments. Agreed. Okay.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Ms. Conley in the second. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Shonciscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to other business. Guess now we get to talk about roundabouts again. Mr. Shields?
So we did have some questions on this, and maybe this would just be a chance for council. I did email back responses to some of the questions we got, but this would be an opportunity if council did have questions just about the design. As Mr. Frida did note, the designs are complete, but we have had some discussions with staff about the brick treatments on the sidewalk, and we believe we can make that change at council direction to not have the brick sidewalks. We could go with either an all-concrete model, or there, you know, where things could get more complicated, is sort of variations on that theme. We have worked with some other applicants, and we're going to come back to council on a new standard for streetscape with respect to brick usage in sidewalks. And it is possible that where we will land on that is some version of a brick ribbon around the periphery of the sidewalks. You see that in some places in the city already, for instance, at Broaddale, along the front inch there, or some variation on that theme. Right now, we're anticipating that council's direction is going to be to not have 100% brick on the sidewalks, and so we wanted to have that discussion with you. And I think that's probably the main thing.
While we're thinking about that, what about the crosswalks across the, are there also planned to be brick right now?
In the current plan, is that a?
They look to be, but it's a small image.
Mr. Frida? The?
In the color version of the little diagram of the staff report, they are the same color as the sidewalks. I presume that's also brick?
Yeah, that would be the existing, or when this was developed, the streetscape standard. So that would be replaced with a standard zebra stripe. I think it was really the, technically, it's the continental pedestrian markings, which is basically the white paint.
Not the brick that's up at Oak Street, that's the test?
Yeah.
Pavers?
That is a test. I think that deserves more conversation before we adopt that as the standard. Those, to me, that's not a great compromise. One, they're not very attractive. Two, they have the visibility problems. And I think the white paint, frankly, is the safest. I think that's what the experts tell us. The, the, that experiment was a good thing to explore some options, but, and they will reduce the maintenance costs, but they do have some of the other drawbacks, I think, that you, that you see with, with visibility specifically.
I had a quick question, because I think this conversation happened before I came onto council. The, is it the knock on the brick sidewalks is that they're, it's expensive and hard to maintain? Is that what it is?
And they're slippery.
Additional safety, freezing, uneven ADA, bicycle, pedestrian.
Okay. They're expensive to install, expensive to maintain, and they're not the most accessible. But we like the look of them, or we liked the look of them back in 2015 when we adopted the standard.
Right, right.
Thank you.
So on this one, can you just go through those questions that I had so that others can hear the answers? And then my, another question is, is this a one lane? Is it one lane or two lanes? As we are, currently, it's two lanes going into some areas and one lane going into other areas. Is it all becoming one lane in all directions?
Maybe, Ms. Frida, if you could come up to the microphone?
There's one lane through the traffic circle. Okay, yeah, it is one lane through the traffic roundabout.
So then, as say, we're coming up Annandale Road from Washington Street?
Mm-hmm.
That?
It squeezes down to one lane.
It squeezes down to one lane. And where does it squeeze down to one lane near?
On the approach. You probably can't see it on that particular diagram. I actually made that diagram this afternoon. I, I cut off a little bit of the top and bottom so I could get, I could blow up the details a little bit better for you to see. So that didn't really, it probably, I probably took off the approach to that. So the approach is, it, it goes down to one lane and every, in the, in the, I think there's two different locations that comes in in two lanes and it squeezes down to one.
Okay, I think several of them are, like, there's a turn lane and a straight lane, but they all squeeze down to one lane for the entrance and one lane for the exit. Okay. And then the areas in between, the curb, the new curbs or, I, you know, safe crossing areas, that would eliminate the ability to make a left-hand turn out of some of these entrances, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so like exiting the parking garage there for 4Ps, that would only be a right-hand turn?
Absolutely.
And then coming out of the 150 South Washington parking lot, that would also only be a right-hand turn?
Yes.
Okay. And all these businesses know this? Are they aware of this?
They're, yes.
Okay.
This plan's been, been reviewed by just about everybody.
Ms. Underhill?
I know plans are 100%, are at 100% completion, correct? Like, okay, so I do, I just, I have a question as to why things are structured certain ways. I noticed on the southeast side, there's a raised, I almost want to call it a bump out, but it's not, it's not quite sidewalk level, to sort of create a neck down in the traffic circle. This is not, I guess, I don't, this is not north, southeast, west on this diagram, so.
We can go the bottom right quadrant, bottom left quadrant.
Okay, so I'm, I'm talking about the bottom left quadrant.
Okay.
Has a, a little bit of a neck down on, for, for the turn. And so what I'm curious about is on the top right quadrant, that area seems to have striping rather than that
Is this, is this what we're looking for?
sort of neck down that's on the opposite, diagonally opposite side. I was wondering why those two different corners are receiving different treatments.
I'm not really following what you're asking here. I apologize.
Yep.
So Scott?
So if, if we're looking, if you can zoom in a little bit if possible, but? Sure.
Can we pull up the colored version?
Yeah, I think the colored version.
The colored version might help. That's on the packet. Because the colored version,
Zoom in?
Yeah, I guess make the traffic circle a little bigger.
the bottom left quadrant shows this kind of light blue, concrete raised. I think it's
Okay.
the?
So the yellow is the typical travel lanes that any and all vehicles and bicyclists I think it has.
Legend calls it concrete raised median?
Yeah. If you have that one. will use. The light blue is, is, is for the turning, is excess, it's, it's a little bit
It's on page 2 of the staff report.
of a different material, and that's for the turning radiuses for the larger vehicles, like the 18-wheelers, the trucks that deliver to Harris Teeter, our, our emergency vehicles, our bus, our buses, things like that. That's part, that's material that, that the vehicles can cross over if need be to, to navigate the circle correctly.
Gotcha. And so what?
But it's not typical travel lane.
Gotcha. I, I guess what I'm wondering is why is there a striped area on the, I guess if we're looking at this, the upper right quadrant versus if you look in the lower left quadrant, you have the blue raised material. So why is the upper right quadrant?
The blue is the extra area that is for the turning radius for the larger vehicles to, to navigate if need be. I'm not sure exactly why the striped part is there. There was a reason for it, but I, it's, it's, it's been so long since we designed this several years ago that I don't remember exactly the reasons why there. I do, I did know the answer to this question, but I don't have it for you right now. I'm so, I'm so sorry.
If it were to be possible to follow up on that, I would.
I definitely could.
Okay.
The angle, how does the angle of the curve?
The angle of the right is so much sharp, lower left is so much sharper, upper right.
But there is a reason behind the striping there, and I, I apologize. I don't have it off the top of my head right now.
Yeah, thank you.
But I can get that to you.
Okay.
The reason why there's blue versus not blue is the angle of the turning radius.
It still looks a better under.
Than on the upper right.
But then, like, could you put flexi-post there? I mean, if, like, why, why not create more of a, a neck down in that area?
Is it like a rollover? I, I took, I took the explanation to be like it's more of a, like, like a slope, right, for a truck to like go over?
Right.
So the curb, like, you're not going to hit the curb on the sharper turn coming off of, I don't know where that is, by PMA Health onto Annandale Road. And so the, and so the blue part's like sloped so that it can go over it, right?
But then I would imagine that the striped area is, it just striped, and so a, a car could also use that as like extra turning radius too.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I take it to be the striping to like be trying to narrow the road visually, even though it's not to say that drivers will necessarily, right, like obey the striping. So I get the question.
Yeah, so I was wondering, you know, could, could that be an area for flexi-posts or something else to actually create more of a neck down?
One, one thing I know Scott has been saying to me is that the truck traffic going to the Harris Teeter is one of the design constraints on this. It's, there's a lot of truck traffic, and so this striped area is probably going to be driven over on a regular basis by tractor trailers.
Mm-hmm.
And so having kind of a rollover for something that's going to, we know is going to happen pretty frequently, I think, was a design consideration to not have that treatment at that corner. Does that sound familiar?
Yeah. I believe, I believe it's the, the, the blue area, the light blue areas in the center, and there's striped are basically the same type of thing. It's, it's mostly for the larger vehicles to pass through that intersection, and we give the proper geometry for them to make that turn.
So the truck traffic, I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Shields, was actually one of my questions, because we've gotten complaints that sometimes trucks errantly go through the Winter Hill neighborhood instead of coming down the approved plan, which is down south Maple and then a hangar right on Annandale. So during construction, I think one of the questions was whether this intersection will be closed, and it sounds like it won't, but can we make sure that truck traffic, I guess, adheres to that and doesn't try to take a detour through the neighborhoods or other places because they're trying to avoid the messy construction underway?
But we have that all in consideration for our MOT plan?
Great. Mr. Snyder?
It might be useful to recall both from, for the standpoint of bicyclists and pedestrians, the intersection and its current configuration. It needs a lot of work, and we need to do something about that intersection. So then the next question is, do you do the more traditional treatments with, you know, stops on, well, it's, it's got a, a light there, if I remember, but the traffic backs up, it's way too long for pedestrians to, the, the street is way too long and the lights are way too short to safely navigate that intersection for a lot of folks. So I think what they've opted to go with here is something that's been proven to be more operational efficient and safety than the traditional treatments with, with, with red lights, and we know already that the traffic backups, et cetera. So a couple of quick questions. In designing this, have you taken, has it been taken into account both the neighborhood, the Winter Hill neighborhood, their usage of this will be extensive, the intersection there, because it's right there at the neighborhood. The Harris Teeter, I think that was already mentioned, and that we're feeding here from major highways of Route 7 and 29. In other words, what I'm trying to get some assurances is that all the related factors in this particular intersection have been taken into account, and we have selected the design and the details of the design to maximize traffic, not only performance but safety, along with the safety of vehicles, bicyclists and pedestrians. So could I have staff comment on that? And does it conform with the very best standards that are available?
I'd be happy to answer that question for you. Yes, we took painstaking measures during the design process.
Am I not on? Yeah, maybe just get a little closer to.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we took painstaking measures during the design process in order to make sure that the roundabout adheres to all the latest federal highway and VDOT standards for roundabouts, for all the safety measures that are included in this, that helps to calm traffic and to merge the bike traffic in with the vehicular traffic and to make it a safe passage through the intersection. That also shows that the, the maintenance of the overall intersection is much less in the long run. But basically, I think we chose this design through the recommendations of our, of our contractor who did the analysis based on the safety is, it was the number one issue. There, a standard signalized intersection has 32 points of conflict involved in it. The roundabouts have eight points of conflict, which is a huge, huge reduction in possible collisions between pedestrians and vehicles and bicyclists. So, but like I said, we, we, we exhausted all of the resources that VDOT and federal highways had in order to design this the safest and the most efficiently, efficiently possible.
Right. In addition to those general standards and guidelines, have you taken into account the uniqueness of the traffic flows and the usages around that area?
Yeah, there, we, we, we know that there's a lot of crash history and a lot of accident history at this intersection. And this is the reason why we decided to go with the most safe design that we could find.
Okay, thank you. And one other really comment for staff, public education will be important. This is the first one of these we've had in the community, both people passing through as well as our own residents. So hopefully, there is a plan for extensive public education, is there?
So we will work on that. I don't know that I've seen that plan, but we do recognize the need for that, and we will promote that.
Great, thanks. And one other, there was a comment made during the prior discussion about the, the condemnation. At this point, I think I want to be clear that the Bus Rapid Transit Project on Route 7 does not assume any kind of condemnation. Just, I wanted to put that on the record. But thank you very much for these, these comments and responses.
Ms. Connolly? Thank you for another shot at questions. Mr. Frida, you may as well just come on back up. So on this one, and these are questions that I asked Mr. Shields that he answered. There's that crosswalk that crosses Maple. It looks like it's almost directly by the vehicular exit of that parking garage. Is that there or is it not right there at that exit?
I see an exit of about, about, it's about 10 feet to the right. Is that what you're talking about?
I just see lower, lower level ENT-R, which is next to a pink thing there, and then it goes to the crosswalk.
Yeah, there's, there, we, we basically had to design based on the existing structure and the existing, the existing parking lot that's there. It's not the ideal. It wasn't the actual design we intended at the beginning of this project.
Okay.
Because we were actually working with the developers of the George Mason, the whole George Mason development that was going to be done there.
Got it.
We had halfway through our, our project design, we had to go back and return it to the existing conditions plan.
Okay.
As you see now.
Okay. So then the actual garage entrance is further up there?
Oh, yeah.
The yellow. Okay, so that ENT-R is something else.
Yeah.
Okay, and then on the 150 South Washington, where are the two exits from the parking lot? I only see one.
Yeah, it's probably a little bit, yeah, a little bit further down. It's not shown. This isn't, this is, this is an older concept plan.
Uh-huh.
It's not, the, the best plan to look at is the one that's a little bit more full. It's not colorful.
Okay.
But this one, it's, it's shown, it's just about where the, before that little, that little tan area. You don't, where that, the left side there, right? The left, south, south?
No, the right-hand side, the right-hand side.
Yeah.
Right where that hand is.
That's, that's all right there.
But that only looks like one exit.
That's one exit right there.
Is there another?
No.
There's not. So there's only one exit now coming out of that parking lot?
It's, we, we didn't change any of the exits coming in and out of that parking lot. We did, we left, everything is existing. We're not, we're not, we're not fooling with their exits and entrances at all.
However, so there are two exits right now in that parking lot. One comes out of the?
Further down.
First row and what?
We're, we're, we're not, we're not changing.
Okay.
On that whole side, we're not changing because the development is staying the same, at least for now. We're not making any changes.
Okay. I, I don't mind if you do make a change. I'm just concerned that if there are two exits, then one of them is really close to the entrance to the circle and how Okay, and then on 150 South Washington, where are the two exits from the parking lot? I only see one.
Yeah, it's probably a little bit, yeah, a little bit further down. It's not shown, this isn't, this is, this is an older concept plan. It's not, the, the best plan to look at is the one that's a little bit more full, it's not colorful.
Okay.
But this one, it's, it's shown, it's just about where the, before the little, the little tan area, you don't, where that, the left side there, right, the left, south, south?
No, the right hand side, the right hand side, right where that hand is.
That's, that's all right there.
But that only looks like one exit.
That's one exit right there.
Is there another?
No.
There's not. So there's only one exit now coming out of that parking lot?
It's, we, we didn't change any of the exits coming in and out of that parking lot. We, we left, everything is existing. We're not, we're not, we're not fooling with their exits and entrances at all.
However, so there are two exits right now in that parking lot. One comes out of the.
Further down.
First row and what?
We're, we're, we're not, we're not changing.
Okay.
On that whole side, we're not changing because the development is staying the same, at least for now, we're not making any changes.
Okay, I, I don't mind if you do make a change, I'm just concerned that if there are two exits, then one of them is really close to the entrance to the circle and how could that exit be there is my question actually.
Yeah, well, that, that's, that's where it is right now and we can't, we can't remove that exit because it, it would be unfair to that property owner. They, they have it now, so we can't change it. Yeah, you can see right there, that, that's the actual final design right there. So it is a little bit close to that intersection, but it's a right turnout only and a right turn in.
Okay. All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Yeah, matching the Google images of the street currently with this and I think it leaves both of them. On this one, you can see that it does leave too. Okay, Ms. Flynn?
I had a quick comment just on the pedestrian crossings. I think, you know, we had tonight's comment and then we had comment about this roundabout during Ask the Council session and then we also had the written comment from Ms. Thompson, I believe, about, you know, whether pedestrians are gonna get stuck sort of in the pedestrian island or whether there may be opportunities to incorporate, you know, flashing crossings or crosswalks at all and whether they're a part of this design now and I know we kind of get locked in at 100% design. Given the length of some of these projects, it would just be helpful even when they comply with the different safety standards and, you know, round, federal highway standards and roundabout standards and whatever else that we are, as we are getting closer to construction, referring back to just like best practices for these sorts of crosswalks and doing what we can to the extent we have flexibility to do so, to try to, you know, increase safety as much as possible and implement those sorts of measures, you know, whether it's, as you were saying, the reflective sort of markings as opposed to, you know, muted kind of bricks that you're not gonna see at night as easily to make sure that this is as safe as possible given kind of the development we know is gonna be happening around there and the increased foot traffic and, you know, other folks who are gonna be using this area to get to additional park space and whatever else.
Yeah, I echo that in sentiment and when we're talking about the sidewalks standard that we're discussing, I think, you know, we talk about its appearance a lot and we've been discussing safety with the brick, changing out the bricks, but I think the painting, the, you know, reflectiveness, all the other things that we can do when we're discussing the sidewalk standard are pretty important in design as well. I think everybody agrees on that, so just to echo your point.
So a clarifying question while we're talking about the pedestrians. So the staff report says there's pedestrian signals. Is that like a flashing, like the RFB like we have behind the Harris Teeter? Is it a pedestrian beg button somehow that makes roundabout traffic start and stop? Like what exactly is the pedestrian signal?
Was that a question for me? I didn't hear that question at all.
If you, I think you should stay right there.
I'll stay here, but I, I, I honestly, I couldn't hear a word you said.
So the question was about the rapid flashing beacons and what the pedestrian signals will be?
And?
That's what they are, because the staff report in our line 42 says pedestrian signals and pedestrian refuge islands. So walk me through what the pedestrian experience is like if you're on any one of those four legs.
Sure, there are gonna be rapid, rapid rectangular flashing beacons at each of those crossings. Basically, when a pedestrian wants to cross, there is a button they push and it will flash and let the vehicle traffic know that there's somebody in the crosswalk and that it'll remain flashing until they completely get through to the, at least to the island and to the opposite side of the road.
Okay, so the experience would be like.
We do have some samples in, in the city already.
Yeah, we have the one at Lincoln and Dorchester and then we have the one Harris Teeter.
And they work really good.
Okay. Now walk me through the bicycle experience because I think upstream and downstream for this, Maple is one of our three dedicated bike lanes in the city. So what's that experience like if someone's in one of those?
Sure, absolutely. A bike, as it's traveling to the enters, to the roundabout, the bike lane will end and the bike, the bicyclist can either, has, has two options. They can actually dismount the bike and walk it through the intersection like a pedestrian or they could remain on their bike and merge into vehicular traffic because the trap, the design of the roundabout is such that it, it brings it down to speeds of bicyclists. So bicyclists can go right into the, the lanes of traffic with the vehicles and navigate right through the roundabout just like a vehicle. And that's, they're designed that way for, for safety and be, and to keep the traffic speeds down to the lower acceptable levels. And that's the whole point of the roundabout is to, is to slow the traffic down. They don't necessarily have to stop if there's nobody around, if there's no other cars or no other pedestrians or buses, if there's their yield signs or not stop signs that enter the, the roundabout, so they can slow down and that's what we, we bring it down to one lane for going through the roundabout. It, it, it lets the driver know that we're squeezing it down to one lane and that the speeds are much slower through the roundabout than on your typical street.
Got it. I was going back to some of the public comments since we last discussed this in January 2022. So I know that while we're talking about change orders, we, and the design is 100% complete, one of the best practices that was recommended from the CACT was considering some sort of ramp from those dedicated bike lanes up onto the sidewalk so that people can dismount more easily. So I don't know how, whether that's something that would fit in this design, but I did see that comment that came from the CACT two years ago, three years ago now. If we are able to consider that kind of change order, I will leave it up to staff with professional engineering judgment, but that did come from our residents.
Sure, good recommendation.
Great, thank you. Other questions or comments?
I just wanted to second the ramp comment.
I, I hear you on the speeds, I just think that for some people less comfortable, they may want to choose that dismount option. But it is good that we are thinking about throttling the speeds enough to make it people comfortable. Oh, okay, Ms. Conley, please.
And as you're talking about speeds, it reminds me, one of the intersections that we've also been keeping an eye on is Gundry and Anndale, which is further up there in Winter Hill. So one of the intents of this project is to slow the traffic through there as well because when they have a green light, they just speed right on up and hit that intersection there. So every single piece of traffic is gonna have to slow down before they get into that Winter Hill neighborhood.
That's the intention and, and that's the beauty of the roundabout. It does slow every single person down, every vehicle, every, every bicycle. And they can be coming at a high speed on a bike, they can be coming at a high speed on any, any vehicle and it really, you have to slow down. It, it's something that it, it's built in basically to the nature of the, the geometry of the roundabout, you have to go slow.
You know, Ms. Conley, it was interesting, we had, I forgot if it was a Ask the Council, but some neighbors from that area come and talked to us and one of them said that they thought that Waze was sending people sort of like off 50th on Anndale as a shortcut to Broad. And so it actually, not only will it reduce speeding, I think it could dissuade people from even using that anymore as a cut through because they don't want to deal with the roundabout. So, you know, maybe we'll see a reduction in people cutting through that neighborhood.
That's a perfect example of that because of our digital satellites imaging, it will, it will change the routes of different cars and different vehicles. Based on the fact that we now have a roundabout in place, it'll, it'll bring less traffic through there.
When I spoke with residents in Virginia Village, the residents that I did speak with were very excited about this project because they said that a lot of drivers speed down when there's a green light, speed right through the intersection and go right by their house and it's, they said it's really scary in that area.
That's the sad part about human nature. They, they see the green light and they want to make it and they, they speed up as opposed to speeding down when you, you should be speeding down to go through any intersection at all, but people tend to speed up, making sure they want to make that green light. The roundabout will change that.
Well, any questions or comments on actually the authorization toward the contract? That's what staff needs from us. Okay, do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to authorize the purchasing agent on behalf of the city to award a contract worth up to $2,132,000 to Ardent Company LLC for the South Maple Avenue and Anndale Round Road Roundabout CIP Project.
Great, thank you. Do we have the second?
Second?
Ms. Downs on the second. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Siskud?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero, thank you.
Great, let's get to item E2, council meeting discussion. Mr. Shields?
Well, thank you, Mayor Hardy and members of council. This is the first meeting of the year and we thought it was an opportunity just to have a touch base on some organizational issues. We do have our regular agenda setting meeting and in that you may have noticed that we've been trying to avoid agenda items for the third Monday of the month in the spirit of trying to reduce some of the number of meetings that the city council has had. We'll try to work with council, make sure that that's working for you. One of the things that we noticed in terms of your staff, that when the council was doing that as a, as a practice a year ago, that it did allow us to have at least one period of the month where we can focus on, really be focused on implementation. The, the regular rhythm for your staff of preparing for these council packets is, it's a, it's a high level of effort and so it allows us to shift our focus and, and move more towards implementation as opposed to preparing for the next meeting. Also after the meetings, there's always the follow-up for all, all the questions and comments and requests that come out of those meetings. That sort of waterfalls through staff also and also it's important, we want to get responses back, but it can interfere with caring for with the work that the council and the, and the city government's already committed to. So I just wanted to note that and, and we'll try to carry on with that. One of the things that goes with that is sometimes they'll need to have a work session discussion at the end of a regular meeting. And so when we do that, we'll communicate that in advance and it will require, I think, staff to be very concise in our staff reports and also I think just moving through the business of the agenda so that we can get to work session items. For example, on January 27th, we will have a work session on the accessory dwellings. And so to keep the minds fresh for that work session, we'll probably need to sort of pace or have a, have a nice brisk pace through the business of the agenda in order to have good time for that work session discussion. And there'll be more examples of that as we look into February and March, et cetera.
Mr. Shields, can we just pause there?
Yes.
So I guess I'll preface by saying I support us moving to three meetings where possible. That was really nice when we had that in the schedule and I think people appreciated having some more time back in the schedule. I think as Ms. Conley said, 75 is a lot during the year and we all have many other commitments. Does it always have to be the third week of the month or is it just, could be flexible depending on where there are holidays because I know people might be traveling depending on when there's a school holiday? I think I'm flexible in that, but I guess I would look to my colleagues to figure out whether, where in the month they would prefer to try to eliminate that fourth meeting or if staff has a preference that that third meeting of the month works well cadence wise?
I think having it be kind of a regular routine is helpful for planning work. There is also, I think, a good discussion to have, if you were going to reduce one meeting, do you want that to be a regular meeting or do you want that to be a work session? What this presupposes is that the meeting you'd get rid of would be a work session as opposed to a regular meeting because the public is able to come and engage with the council at the regular meetings and so that was the thought process behind that. And then lastly, January and February both have holidays on that third Monday and so it's sort of naturally, you know, suggests that that's one to, to, to cancel.
People have thoughts about that, which week of the month and?
I definitely agree on the work session versus, I mean, I'd like to have the sessions be engaging the public as much as possible. So I'd prefer to keep the two regular meetings and then add work session to one of those as appropriate. And in terms of which day, if it matches the holidays, at least two out of the, those that we know, I think makes sense to keep it on the third.
And, you know, I feel that if that helps your staff by having it be a norm, you know, it's the third so that your, your staff can plan for that, I think that would, you know, I'm all for trying to give you all more time to answer our questions and, and that sort of thing, you know, we, I definitely understand that these meetings create more work and it's a lot of work to prepare for the meeting. So with your staff knowing you have that, that third week off and that helps your staff plan, I think is a good idea, especially people I know with full-time jobs, I think that also, or travel, you know, that helps to have us knowing that set time we'll be off.
I would also add, you know, that we all kind of have our liaison responsibilities too and that those often tend to fall in like the second and third weeks more often than the first and the fourth weeks. So it gives us that break to not have the.
I think it just depends.
Yeah, well, to not have the mayor's meeting, like you lose two of the meetings because you potentially lose the mayor's meeting on the second Wednesday and then you lose the work session on the third, you know, the third Monday. And so it helps to remove those two meetings when a lot of us are already doing additional meetings during that time because of liaison meetings too. So I'm fine with this, should be able to work around it.
Looks like April, we can't find a week though, is that right? Because it's budget season?
That is, budget season is one month where we have gone back to the four meetings so we can get through the budget process.
Okay. Ms. Conley?
I'd just like to make an additional proposal that we consider eliminating the Wednesday morning all council mayor meetings. I think that is something that has evolved over time in the time that I've been on council. When I was first on council, it was just the mayor and the vice mayor who set the agenda, met with the city manager and staff and that was the role of the mayor and vice mayor. Over time, it has evolved into a meeting where everyone has to attend because there's business that's happening at that meeting. It's a public meeting that we all have to attend. That can sometimes be a significant hardship for those of us that do have to go to work in the morning, filling all that out. So I would really like to propose that we rethink that and I, I know that you and the mayor have regular meetings anyway, so is there a way that we can turn that scheduling section and make that part of the regular Monday night meeting and just eliminate that Wednesday morning meeting completely and have the mayor and vice mayor meet with the city manager and go back to that cadence? I think that would, personally, I don't ever want to miss a mayor's meeting because things happen there and I want to hear what's going on, but if we all agreed that there, there was a way to take the business that we talk about in those meetings and do them at a regular meeting, that would really eliminate a third of the meetings that are on that list.
What about, do we have Ask the Council once a month? What if we just did it once a month that, because we have to be there anyway, well, not, we don't have to be there, but Ask the Council starts at nine, we could just do it that one, I don't know, that's just one thought.
What do people think? I've only ever known it, I guess in nine years, where the mayor's meetings have opened to everybody, certainly open to whether people want to come or not. I think I've always appreciated how transparent the process was and the ability to ask out items and shape when things are ready or not, but if people don't want to come, also happy to close them. Who has opinions?
Madam Mayor, I, I think you're right. The history of these meetings were that they were purely between the mayor, the vice mayor and the city manager and there was a desire to open them up to other council members. So I think you're right, I would, I would be in favor of the additional transparency that we have now.
Yeah, I would agree and I have to say, I don't, you know, I'm speaking, I know that there are people who have to be at work at nine, so I'm not, you know, I, I don't have that constraint, but as a new council member, I've found them really informative because as we're going through the schedule, there's just sort of, you know, some, oh, well, let's move this here and I've just learned a lot by just listening and, and looking at that schedule and sort of the go back and forth. So it's been valuable for me, but I, I definitely understand for those who need to get to work that it is, it can be hard.
I mean, could a lot of the scheduling happen though at the council meeting?
I, yeah, I tend to think that, you know, Laura, if we're doing the, if we're trying to do the Ask the Council session, maybe the, I don't know, it's not really a compromised position as much as it's like a dual approach that we might be able to take, which is to try to do most of this at the end of the Monday session, but like recognizing that we're all tired and that like things also come into our head outside of this session, would you have time to reflect or when you're thinking about what's coming up, that maybe like rolling in the once a month opportunity as part of the, you know, mayor's meeting and Ask the Council might be a good way to like have one touch point during the month in a more informal session that's still a public meeting, but reduce, you know, the other three and roll them only into the two other meetings that we're having. And, you know, we get down from like four to one.
Other opinions?
Yeah, I think it'd be interesting with the, you know, is the, does the public pay attention more to Monday night meetings and watch those and get more information from that? Like if you're seeking what's going on in the schedule, it seems to me from what I hear people, where people go back and watch a meeting, it would be a Monday night meeting versus going and watching a mayor's meeting on Wednesday morning.
Our, our Wednesday ones are getting covered now too.
Pardon?
Our Wednesday meetings are getting covered now too, people taking interest in those.
At Arlington now.
And others.
Okay, I'm just thinking that the general public might go. I'm just thinking that the general public might go to a Monday night meeting recording before they would do that. Like you wouldn't necessarily look at both of them, and that might be a, a way to get more discussion about the public, you know, setting the agenda as more public process. I don't know, I kind of like the, maybe just once a month, but-
I mean, I will note, I think I remember two or three years ago, we did move these down to 30 minutes. And for the most part, we did get them down to 30 minutes, so it is more, you know, for people who need to get to work. We wrap by nine o'clock, and so that was a nice thing that we did. Hopefully staff appreciates the more concise meeting too. Sorry, Justine, you were saying something?
I was just gonna say, I like Erin's idea of the once a month.
Or-
Or the record, for the record, Ms. Underhill, it was my idea.
Sorry to give credit to someone else.
Let the record reflect, that was Ms. Downs on the idea.
Any other thoughts?
I guess if we can get to three meetings a month, I would like to see how that goes through the first three to four months of the year. And then, I guess the question legally, like if people don't show up to the Wednesday meetings, let's say it is just a meeting with me and Debbie and staff. Like, no, no one else has to come, right? Like, it's advertised as a public meeting, should more people show up because it's a meeting of the body then, but what-
But you do have, if, if it's advertised as a public meeting, you have to have a quorum.
That's right.
So you have to have at least four people. And if you have four people-
Then we don't have the meeting, and it's just why it meets with the mayor and vice mayor.
Then that's just a meeting with the mayor and the vice mayor and the city manager.
That's, that doesn't need, that's not a public meeting.
Wouldn't become a public meeting, no.
If you don't want to come, then it becomes a public meeting. We've advertised it as such. No one wants to come, we're just down to a regular meeting when we talk about the schedule. So what's the harm in that, I guess is?
I think once it's advertised as a public meeting, it has to stay as a public meeting.
And you're counted against you if you don't show up. Like if you didn't come to the public meeting as a council member, then that's one meeting where you didn't attend.
Right. What if we just cancel, and then it's not a meeting anymore, right? So if we come 8:30 on Wednesdays-
But you're not gonna have every week negotiate whether it's a public meeting or not a public meeting, whether it counts on your attendance record or not attendance record.
Because I don't see the complexity in that. Like 8:30, no one's here besides me and Debbie, we don't have a public meeting, and it proceeds. And then if we have more than four people, then you start the mayor's meeting as is? Am I missing something?
Well, you can't proceed at the, with just the two of you, because it's a meeting of council that's been called, and so you'd have to have four of you to proceed.
But we're canceling the mayor's meeting if you don't have quorum?
Yes, if you could do that, you could just cancel, and nobody discusses scheduling that day.
But if you have three people, then you're really stuck, because you don't have a quorum, and you can't have a two-person meeting because you've got three people. And it's also, I think, confusing to the public if you're saying, well, we might have it, we might not have it, maybe show up, don't show up.
Madam Mayor, I, I, I'm not sure there's consensus on this, but actually, we're, we're sort of adopting a pretty reasonable approach now, and somewhat informal, but if the meeting hasn't gone on until midnight, and we collectively can deal with the schedule on Monday night, then we do so. If the schedule is complicated, or there are other reasons, then we go ahead with the Wednesday meeting. So I actually think-
We've done that enough times, I think, in practice.
The practice that we've evolved is a pretty good one, in the absence of a consensus to move more drastically, one way or the other.
That's a good point. We have done that too. Or when we've had Tuesday meetings, because of holidays, we cancel the Wednesday ones and shoot to do it Monday night. Okay. The staff have an opinion?
We're for regular order, and so kind of like whatever the council does decide, like having it be kind of a regular rhythm is, is easiest for staff to manage.
Okay, well, as I was saying, given that if we are endeavoring to go to three meetings a month, let's try that out for the next four to five months, get past budget season, because I do think that we will probably appreciate having the opportunity to talk about where things are in the schedule as we go through this transition. Let's try to talk about schedule where we can on a Monday night if it doesn't end too late, but keep the Wednesday meetings as scheduled until we feel like we don't need them anymore. Does that sound reasonable to everybody?
But with an attempt to try, to look at the schedule, look and, you know, add this to the end of our, each of our agendas, the scheduling calendar that we've been doing on Wednesday mornings, try to do that Monday nights unless there's a-
People have things to add and suggest, like, I do think that, I personally, like, I share the sentiment with Erin that sometimes come Tuesday night, Wednesday, I think of something, and that's why the Wednesday opportunity is really good, because you do clear your mind, you go through your notes, you think about what follow-ups there are, and so having that opportunity to catch things before the packet is really valuable. And I want to make sure that, again, is still an opportunity for everybody on council, and not just the mayor and the vice mayor. So, okay?
However, if we weren't to have a mayor's meeting on Wednesday, then you just have to get yourself into the cadence that you have to think of it on Monday, or it's- or send an email or something. But I think if we made a decision that we were gonna eliminate those Wednesday morning mayor's meetings, then we could get into a different kind of cadence, just like when we said, we don't want the meetings to go until 9:30, just nine o'clock, and then we made that happen. So there is a way to do it if we all were committed to doing it. But I understand, but just-
Let's check in after budget adoption?
Check in after budget, sounds good.
Thank you. Okay. Other organizational things, what other suggestions the staff have?
May I just make one comment? Just as far as canceling these work sessions, they will show up as canceled on the calendar just so folks who are used to the regular rhythm of every other week meetings, it won't be confusing for them that there's just not a meeting there. I, I think that's important, so, and it gives you flexibility, you have your meetings posted. If you had to, you decided you wanted to have a meeting on that third, third week, then it's already posted, and you can have it. But you decide you don't need it, then we just cancel it, so less confusion for the public.
Great, thank you. Wyatt, other things?
I think the other area, I think, for exploration of the council is the committee structures, and thinking through kind of what the purpose of the committees are, is, is a committee necessary? Could it be beneficial if committees shifted to maybe an ad hoc committee to deal with a specific issue? But then it, then it sunsets, and it ends. I think those are, would, all kind of in the spirit of thinking about how the council uses its time most effectively, and the spirit of reducing meetings. And so I put that on the table for the council's discussion. A lot of these committees are about 10 years old. Like they, the council didn't used to have most of these committees, and so that is something that has grown up over time, and it's, it's something the council, I think, should reconsider. You know, is it necessary? And so we've had some discussions about GOVOPS and how it could have sort of some ad hoc things, as there are some priority issues that the council wants to work with staff on and make some progress on, we could better define that. Each of the committees could go through that thought process with the goal of eliminating them when they're not, you know, meeting a specific purpose.
Okay, I think it's generally just good best practice to make sure that when you get together for a meeting, whether it's a standing one or not, that you have a clear agenda, a clear objective, what are you trying to accomplish? Meetings are always about making decisions, not for updates. Updates can be done over email. I had a previous boss, he was very strict about that. He would walk out of the room if there was no pre-read or agenda set, which is probably too strict, but would encourage us to hold ourselves at that same bar so that we get together with a really good purpose.
Can I ask, I know, Mrs. Scott, that you had before talked about EDC and whether the EDC made, EDC meetings made sense, or whether the EDC meetings should just be the EDA, be at the EDA meetings, since staff was essentially giving the duplicate presentation at each of the meetings. And so where did EDC land on whether that's like going forward in 2025, or is that something that's just getting rolled into EDA?
We have not had those discussions, because this is kind of the initiating discussion from council perspective, whether this is the best approach to move forward with, if this is the first time we've had a public discussion of that. But that is definitely one that we've talked about, is that a duplicative meeting that could be consolidated and be a better use of staff's time and council members' time? So I think the next step, if people, if we want to move forward with this approach, then the next step would be to have a meeting with the staff and discuss what's best for staff and for accomplishing our goals for economic development. And, you know, the same holds true. We've talked about Public Utilities Commission, which came on with a specific goal, and maybe the best thing for that was also an ad hoc approach on the flooding and the then greening of linking projects and the stormwater updates that have happened there. So I think the best approach, and Wyatt can give us your feedback and guidance, is to then have, if we move forward with this discussion, it sounds like everybody's in agreement on it, is to go then have the conversations with staff. Yes? A nod?
I guess I'm a little unclear, just in terms of like status, so are we going to have, is this our opportunity to talk about these different council committees now, right? So that you have the direction you need as city attorney, city manager, and city clerk to know kind of expectations of what it is we want to do? And then are we having a further discussion about the actual boards and commissions? Because it seems like, you know, we need appointments committee, legislative committee is very huffal during the legislative season, intends not to meet outside of the legislative season. GOVOPS, we've traditionally used, you know, we need at least four of the meetings to do the reviews and then to give that feedback. And then, you know, additional priorities or that time, you know, outside of this structure, I think is helpful for, you know, council members in giving performance reviews, to have that time separate with staff in a more informal setting if we don't have kind of those opportunities otherwise. And in my mind, like budget and finance, we have canceled those meetings when we haven't needed them, and they've tended to be, you know, budget season oriented, and they are the only opportunity we have to actually have a joint meeting with the school board. So I'm totally fine like not having these as calendared meetings, and in my view, like the EDC meeting may be a place to get relief from a meeting that isn't necessary for people who are currently on that committee, if it can be part of EDA, but that tends to be my thinking, that, you know, they, some of them are kind of like quarterly committees, more so than a, a committee that meets for the course of an entire year.
Well, one example would just be like the Government Operations Committee. If the, the main role of the Government Operations Committee is to review employees, then maybe that's it, right? Four meetings, it doesn't even have to be called the Government Operations Committee, it could be employee reviews.
Yeah, I actually have a strong opinion to have more than that, because I think we've missed some opportunities to, like we've since had discussions on the website, we've talked about HR issues, they're like some kind of the big individual ad hoc topics that we don't talk about from the dais, because there's no necessarily resolution or vote or anything else like that, but are pretty critical to make, to our jobs in ensuring that we're supporting staff in delivering services to the city. So I actually-
So that's one you want to keep?
I actually-
Mrs. Scott, I would agree with you. I would agree with you.
That's the one area where I think the additional meetings have been most helpful. But whether that has to be monthly or it can be an ad hoc, that can be, you know, discussed, but I like having the, the calendar of that and addressing those topics.
With the Budget and Finance Committee, you are correct that it's the only time that the city council's board really come together on a regular basis. However, that wasn't always how it was. There used to be another committee, right? The gang of eight or something, right? That was the school, the school board chair and vice chair, and the mayor and vice mayor, and the city manager and assistant city manager, right?
Finance chair.
And the-
Yeah.
It wasn't even finance directors. It was sort of, it was related to the building of the high school, right? And, but they used to get together on a regular basis, and then that committee kind of dissipated. So budget and finance, ginghamaze, non-existent in nine years, I don't know. Right, right, but that's when budget and finance started to include school board, because that didn't always. When I first was with budget and finance, it was not a committee that included schools at all. So Karen Oliver and I, when we were doing budget and finance, came up with that idea that because there wasn't a regular meeting of the mayor, vice mayor, chair, vice chair, that would be a way to bring school and general government together on a regular basis. But it doesn't, again, it doesn't have to be that way. There could be a different kind of meeting that is-
Not too on budget and finance, I, I do like this with the schools, but I, like, that's our, what, our primary purpose on council, right? Is to set budget. And it feels like that what's discussed at budget and finance should be with all seven-
With be all seven, right.
Well, so like I know, when I miss it, I'm like, oh, now I'm behind, and I-
Right.
Have to catch up. So it's almost like all of those budget and finance decisions should be discussed with full council as well.
Right, that one-
Usually the, whatever report gets shared in budget and finance on Friday usually comes the Monday packet for council, for all of us.
Right, but then do we need to have the Friday meeting if we're all gonna have the Monday meeting?
It's an option with the schools though, right?
Yeah, I, I would say, I think the schools would not be happy if we didn't have that meeting. So I, I know just, when I was on the school board in the past, when the city council would cancel that meeting because it was a slow period or whatever, the schools got kind of irked about this. Like they really value that Friday meeting. So I think, and I think just, you know, given all that we've talked about tonight about communication, I think it's, it's good for us to have that on the books myself.
So I'm trying to hear all the feedback.
Yeah, yeah.
So punting on boards and commissions for now, because I feel like separately we want to tackle that, for the five council committees, I'm hearing desire to keep GOVOPS in some form, appointments clearly continues, budget and finance continues in some form, ledge continues during the season. EDC is kind of the one that's squishy. I guess my suggestion would be for the chairs of each of those committees to kind of think about what is your objective in the meeting, and clearly articulate it, maybe share that over email with council of like, here's why we get together, and here's the frequency that we should get together, hearing all this input, and share that out for the rest of us to, for kind of reflection of like, this feels like a good thing, and maybe even lay out, I think this is just a good meeting practice, for the coming year, if you are not a seasonal committee like ledge, what do you want to accomplish in your four meetings a year, or six meetings a year, whatever that cadence is, and just set that as the marker? So there is a clear reason why we're asking staff to join us, why we're asking each other to be in a meeting. That might be a good way to kind of set our intentions for 2025 of each of these committees, whether they continue or not. But go through that thought process. Can I ask the chairs to do that for each of these? And it may be very simple, maybe yes, the ledge committee needs to continue for the four months of the general assembly session, and that'll be easy, but I just think being thoughtful with that request could be helpful for, to guide the next version of the discussion. Does that sound good? Okay. Thank you to the chairs in advance.
Could I ask for, maybe just one-
Set appointments, right?
Well, the legend appointments have an, have an easy out, I guess, but unless you want to change appointments to meet less regularly, or that, those seem like good processes, so. So really, it's just EDC, GOVOPS, and budget and finance, the three. Sorry, Wyatt, go ahead.
I was just gonna suggest that as the chairs are going through that thought process, if the spirit of it could be is to reduce the number of meetings. Because oftentimes when we sit down and we go through that thought process, we come up with lots of things we could be doing at meetings, and you end up meeting more. The spirit of this is to try to reduce meeting time.
And just a quick note on my end, at least as a member of EDC, those seem to be, I mean, at least from what Letty was talking about with purpose of meetings, for me, those are more so presentations than actions, and so I'm happy just to watch the EDA meeting. For budget and finance, I also, at least I haven't felt like there's been much action taken from my perspective. And so while it's possibly helpful just to see people from the schools, I haven't felt like those discussions were substantially different from the presentation we got the next week. So maybe there's other ways to engage with the schools, with their buddy projects or other things. But anyway, that's my two cents.
If I could modify what Wyatt said, so the spirit is definitely reducing meetings and being more efficient, but it's also how to best accomplish our goals and fulfill our job as council members. And so some of it is accountability and governance, and some of it is advancing our priorities. And so I'd also ask the chairs to kind of hold those both together, because I don't think it is purely just about reducing meetings. We clearly want to do that with you, but we also have a function up here, and we're trying to figure out how to balance those. So, okay. In terms of timelines, what do we think is reasonable to kind of, for EDC, GOVOPS, and budget and finance, to kind of propose a, here's what the purpose of getting this group together is, and what we think the meeting cadence looks like? If we have, if we have a need to meet, like, does that feel reasonable by end of month to kind of propose that?
Yes.
Okay, so maybe by, our January 27th meeting will be long, but maybe in a mayor's meeting that we may or may not have on Janu-, maybe on the January 29th mayor's meeting, we could talk about it? That gives people two weeks? Okay. And then getting to boards and commissions, I know that we are liaisons to many boards and commissions as well, and so I've, I've heard the feedback, there are some boards that are great, and they have clear objectives, and do strategic planning for the year, and then some are just kind of waffling and don't have enough of a thrust in terms of why we chartered them. I don't want to call anyone out publicly, but I guess, given that we're liaisons to all of them, is that something that we could work with the clerks on? So as they have their organizational meetings for year, could we ask the chairs of those boards and commissions to work with the council liaison to make sure they go through that same process? Why are we chartered? What are we getting together for? What is, what are we trying to accomplish? Or is that, do they need more council direction from us first? That's much harder, I realize, to do, because it requires asking our volunteer boards and commissions to. Is PUC the main one that we think has challenges, or do we think other ones have?
I will say, I believe that may be a statutorily required commission? We may want to look into that.
We rechartered it like three years ago. So it was not, it was inactive for a while, right? So, okay.
I have to defer to the lawyer on whether that's statute. I don't know if that's statute required. I guess, okay, so let me. Sorry, I wasn't on the play. I'm not sure if the PUC is required by statute or not, I'm not familiar with that. So maybe you are, Sally, or your firm, or.
So I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but I, I would recommend, this is more of a, kind of a recommendation than some kind of legal advice, but I do think it's important for each of your commissions to have a clear charter from the council, as opposed to kind of self-creating that, so that we understand, you know, why they're formed, how they assist the legislative process, and what that, you know, for what reasons the council needs their, their input. So from my perspective, starting with our ordinance that charters those commissions, and looking at the purpose and the objectives of them would be a useful place to start at this level.
And the only new one we started, I guess, in my time, has been the PUC. So we, we did lay out a charter for them of like, here's what we want you to accomplish. The other ones, I presume, have a charter?
I haven't, I haven't looked.
I guess I'm looking to the clerks.
We have, we have lots of charters and, you know, initiating resolutions and those kind of things for the different groups.
Right, yeah, some are set by state code, some are set by our city code, some are set by resolution, so there's a lot of different ways that they're all created and given their charges.
So out of the list of the, that would be important to know, if we're reviewing that, like, I don't want to go and say, oh, we don't need to do this anymore, and then we disband it and say, state code is requiring it. I'm not familiar, like, I don't, is there a resource where you can go if it's state?
That board and commission chart that I send out fairly regularly, it has all the establishing legislation listed in there, yeah. It's in the header of each of the.
Header.
Boards. It's some, you know, some probably need to be reviewed, but they're mostly in there.
So I'm, I'm sorry, I can definitely picture it, because I'm always looking to see what's open and where they're highlighted, and when you're talking to people in the community, like, oh, here are the six openings that, why don't you consider, but, so you're saying in each of those, there's a header that says?
There should be something in that header that says establishing.
State code?
Yeah, some, so it'll have a state code reference, or a resolution number, or something like that in there.
And does it say city code? Like, what's the difference between a resolution and a city code, like?
So like, for a resolution, it would say like, resolution 2024 dash 01. If it's a state code, it'll say, you know, Virginia code ref, state, Virginia code reference, section, whatever, or city code reference.
So I guess two suggested action items, I guess for those of us who are liaisons to our local boards and commissions, one, I guess, see if you can find the original charter on what the purpose of this one is, especially if you feel like they're floundering a bit and don't know what direction they're going in. And the second, which I know we are hesitant to tell each other how to do our jobs when it comes to liaisons, because I think some people are very active in their boards and commissions, but a general best practice I've found that makes that liaison role more fulfilling, is to make sure that when they set an annual goal or strategic plan, it aligns the council work plan. And so when we've adopted the council work plan this past May or June, for the ones that I'm the board and liaison, commis, liaison to, I share that with them and say, hey, here's what our priorities are. How does the work that you're going to do line up to that? I think Mary Beth, you saw, call it rowing in the same direction. So up to you how you all want to do it, but I do find that those boards then find it helpful that they know they are supporting an overall direction. So that's a suggestion that could ensure, I think, or help prevent some concerns that I think Debbie's raised about boards going rogue, or not knowing exactly what their focus is.
I would say too, I mean, I would say too, an liaison, as a liaison to certain boards and commissions, there can be a frustration, you know, in council saying, like, I'll just say urban forestry commission, right? Like, I think sometimes people feel like they're hitting their heads against like a wall, because they say, you're telling us that, you know, trees and the environment matter, and we're telling you as a commission, and we're hearing from the arborist, like, here are important things that we should be doing in order to fulfill like that objective for the community, and then they don't feel like it matters, because they make the same recommendations three or four years in a row, and we're not funding them, right? And so then we have a commission that is totally out of kind of lockstep with council in terms of, you know, what we're putting the budget toward. And so, you know, this year, for example, maybe urban forestry commission has more of a role, because we are, you know, still looking at a commercial tree canopy requirement, but I, I do think it can be hard as a liaison to say, oh, here are the council priorities for what we want you to do, when like, we don't actually fund anything that they come to us and say that they need in order to like execute on what their mission or responsibility is, in terms of like how they see themselves in the community, and what they should be advocating for with respect to council. So like.
And it's a tough job, right, being liaison, because our job is to represent all those strategic priorities, right? And we know that their job on the board and commission is their very limited scope, and so sometimes it's giving them perspective of, yes, we hear you, this is really important, here's all the other things that we're trying to balance across our council priorities. Having had urban forestry for a couple of years as well, I, I understand that very well.
But can I ask, would that be a case where an ad hoc, the urban forestry commission could be an ad hoc commission that's asked to formulate policy recommendations that we would then, that the council would then seek to implement over a period of time? It might not be that first year the recommendations are made, or even the second year, but we'd hold on to the recommendations, you know, try to implement them, and then every five years, that commission can reconvene to develop new guidelines, new recommendations, because things do take a while to get filtered and digested and funded and implemented and built. So maybe having it every year is too often.
I think that one in particular, you have to have, to be able to be Tree City USA, you have to have an urban forestry commission.
Okay.
And a lot of these are in city code, too, so it would be like figuring.
Actually, let me revise my request. Could the clerks help us figure out which ones absolutely have to stay, per code, per charter, whatever, so that we don't just start the process and be like, oh, we don't think we need this one, right? Like, I don't want us to start that conversation if it really just, like.
So you're talking about every board and commission? You want.
Well, we want to make sure.
Veronica, you're saying that that information, you've already put that information together, it's on that master.
Uh, yeah, for the most part, we might need to clean it up a little bit, but we can put something together, I think.
Check that and see if there's anything you would change.
Just the references.
I mean, just about everything is either set by state code, city code, or some kind of council legislation, like a resolution, so we would either have to keep, like Board of Zoning Appeals and.
Well, no, I don't think we're getting rid of the BZI, so.
Yeah, and I, I think.
But I mean, I know we get rid of them, I've cited this before, on a women's commission, it's Jodi Acosta, or 1996, or something like that, and we met for a little while, and then we met our mission, and we did our events, and they then got absorbed by another organization, and we.
Yeah, I think that went into.
Like, I don't remember what the process was, but we just wasn't, it was no longer serving the original, we, we completed the original purpose and intent and wrapped it up. Like, that happens, I don't see what, we should make that happen, whether it's a resolution or, and it's a city code, then it's our decision to say, let's change the city code, we no longer, we, we achieved the purpose for which this organization was created.
So just can, I just want to be clear, so you would like a list of how each board was formed statutorily, how, and?
And ideally, if there was a charter that was set at the beginning, like, here's the purpose of why we're doing this board or commission, that would be helpful to reference back.
How big of a.
Is that in the code usually?
Job is that?
I, I think we have almost all of that together already.
We just have to pull it together. Do you have a deadline for that?
I was about to ask, what? Because we're short-staffed right now.
As you can see.
I mean, I personally feel, other than, I know PUC might be one that is floundering a bit, but the other ones feel like people would want to keep them?
And I'm not advocate, I'm not advocating for like disbanding urban forestry commission, I'm advocating for, for those commissions, that there is like a gap, right? In terms of what they're entrusted with doing, but how much we can actually, I don't know, push forward some of what it is that they're trying to do, like, how do we want to best use the time of those commission members, so that they get a fulfilling, like worthwhile, satisfying experience out of actually being on a commission?
I try to guide them to do things that will likely be approved.
So could we plan maybe almost like a work session report for a future work session, that we could pull all of it together for you? Does that work?
Yeah, why don't you let us know what sounds reasonable?
Okay.
Maybe February? It's not super urgent, I'm not hearing the need immediately.
Just depends on when the organizing meetings are, because that would be a natural point at which to be having a discussion, so, and all those are different as well.
Okay.
My opinion, but I guess that goes back to us, and if we know it's the organizing meeting, then we should be having the discussion with the staff liaison and the board chair to ensure that that organizing meeting solidifies purpose, intent, calendar, how it's supporting the, you know, council work plan, and how it's a satisfying.
I think tying into the work plan is the key, is if this board and commission, if they're fitting into the work plan, then they have an important role. And every boarding, everyone that I've ever been a liaison is singularly focused on the topic at hand. And I've had like library board members say, we know, we know, we know, we're not going to get all this, but it's our job to advocate for this for the library. So we're going to keep saying it over and over and over again, because we feel like it's our job to advocate for more operation funding, or more something else. And then I always balance it out, and well, you know, we'll do what we can, and all those kind of things. But I feel like that's, that's an important part of it, is that they are singularly focused on that one aspect, and we're focused on all those aspects. And it's, and all of the things that we're covering, for the most part, are all part of that work plan.
I think it goes back to the, whether, if you want to have a board and commission, that's a report-out kind of board and commission, that people know that, and if you have a board and commission who we are tasking with providing policy recommendations based upon the expertise they bring to that board and commission, that we are doing that, and, and they see some tie-in to what they're, what they're bringing, but not overstate the expectation that because you created this, it's going to be executed. And I think that's where the frustration lies, and we've had it with CACT, we've had it with ESC, we've had it with urban forestry, that, you know, people come in with a tremendous amount of expertise, but maybe not knowledge of how the local government procurement works, or local government financing works. And I think, I don't have an answer off the top of my head, but I think that's where a lot of that tension and frustration comes, and in terms of wanting to be on a board and commission, most people don't want to come just to have a report-out kind of meeting. So it's balancing those two things out.
I think one thing that's also good for, to set expectations or manage expectations, if it's already been said, is that most of our boards are also advisory. Very few of them are decision-makers, other than planning and the BZA, really, right? And I guess the BOE. Sorry, what was that?
Retirement board.
And the retirement board. And so the advisory role can be frustrating, because you could give a lot of advice, and the advice may not be heated. But, okay, so just to wrap this up, let me go back through what I think are the action items. On council committees, the request is for the chair of gov ops. Gov ops and.
ESC, I mean, EDC.
EDC and budget and finance. To think through kind of the rationale and purpose, have a plan for the year with the spirit of both reducing meetings, as well as how to best accomplish kind of the council goals and function. For boards and commissions, we're looking to the clerks to refresh her memories on the charters and the original reasons for getting these boards and commissions together, and maybe share with us in February. And as we are liaisons to the boards and commissions, and they're having their planning sessions for the year, make sure that hopefully you have a clear purpose and a work plan that aligns with the council work plan. And then we can have discussions one-off about if we do find a board and commission that is a little errant, what to do about that. Is that accurate capture of next steps on this?
Yeah, I just, I don't, the word errant sounds pejorative to me, and I don't think anybody, anybody goes in.
Well, it's our fault, because we're the, we're the ones that chartered them.
Okay, then I'm the.
That's, I take responsibility for it. No, because I, I think it's, like, we chartered these boards and commissions, and so if we have not given them clear direction, that's on us. Right? I don't think it's on the boards, we, they all signed up to contribute in some way, and so it's our job to give them a clear direction, I think, if we feel like they're floundering a bit. Sorry, I interrupted?
Thanks, Mae.
Is there anything else on committees or organizational things we should discuss? We will aspire to do three meetings a month, except for the month of April, we'll check back in after budget season to discuss how that's going, and whether we want to make changes to the mayor's meeting as well. That was also the consensus, I think. Any other items from council while we're talking about organization?
Not, not really organization, but I think we do need to schedule a legislative committee meeting. Cindy, do you have any comments?
Yep, and just before the meeting, you got an email with, from me, from some dates, and I was going to try to get scheduling consensus before you depart chambers tonight.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Because I totally concur.
Business on the agenda and other things that we need to get to at the end of the night. Do we have business not on the agenda? Any standing regional committee council liaison reports? One of the things I was going to report out from EDA is that they had hired their, the consultant that they had last engaged on ground floor uses, and I think one of the recommendations is think about more flexibility in the, in the post-COVID world, about what ground floor uses people are adopting, because clearly, we have, probably have enough grocery stores and restaurants we're probably pretty, we're doing really well on, but other creative uses that our neighbors are thinking about. So they're putting together the report, and I think the planning commission is probably interested in taking this up as potential recommendation. One item that I think, I have not heard a great explanation for, but this is an example of why our code probably merits some discussion update, is B1 allows childcare and daycare uses and, and early childhood education, but not B2? And other than the 115 versus 85 foot height, I don't understand the differences how we use B1 versus B2. So that was one of those things that was discussed and pointed out, maybe we should rationalize that. There may be other kind of code changes like that, but I wanted to preface that with council, because I know that we all care about how the ground floor gets used, and that may be something that our expert consultants have some recommendations on.
Madam Mayor, I, I think a key element to that is what's taxable and how services generally aren't taxable. So I, since a major purpose of our economic development is financial, I think in addition to what people want to do, what's relevant is the financial yield.
Yes, that was always, you know, a key part of kind of how, what drove kind of our ground floor preferences, but I think as we think about, you know, demanding ground floor, you know, commercial tenants, and the market changing, I think we also have to balance out, like, do we rather stay vacant, or we have some kind of use that might be community-serving? Because when you think about it, what a well-rounded community is, it's going to have some service uses, like, people need childcare, and so it's figuring out what can ideally generate foot traffic, make a complete community, and generates good fiscal, so I think are all part of the equation.
Sure, no, no question, but I want a part of the equation to be the financial as well.
Yep.
Totally agree with everything you've said, but I'm, I really want to go back to, at least in the early days, the purpose of a lot of this billing was to generate tax revenue. Thanks.
Are, are we allowed to adjust our tax levels on certain businesses? So if we're not able to, if we're not taxing services, is that something that we have the power to tax, or no?
It's your B-pole.
That would require a thoughtful written answer.
But isn't that your B-pole? Like, depending on the kind of business it is, you, you have different B-pole rates, right? First, whether you're professional services, whether you're.
That's true, that, are you talking about real estate taxes?
I mean, you know, if the reason that we don't have daycares and false churches because we don't get enough tax revenue from them, is there a way that we can change our tax structure such that we're not so, like, resistant to getting daycares and false church?
So usually that's set by state code, and so it's a short answer. So services, we generally don't get any, very much tax revenue from, whereas retail,
we do get that 1% sales tax.
Gotcha. It just seems to set up like a pretty perverse incentive structure in terms of...
Yeah.
...what we have in the community. And so it would be nice to be able to change that if we can.
Right.
And, and kind of in the land use law world, the rationale for why a use is or is not permitted is, is generally based on the, the nature of the use and the impact on community and the vibrancy of the community, the walkability of a community, the engagement of a community. And I see less about tax, kind of a, kind of a cash calculation is, is, I think, disfavored.
Thank you.
I think as it relates to our special exceptions, the way we've been doing it is, and I know that there's a different terminology, but kind of like a prohibited use list versus a preferred list. I think we've always had this like prohibited list, and we definitely don't want these things, and we want these things. And so it's just refreshing some of that, depending on how the market has changed as well. Anyway, more to come, but I know that the EDA was going to work with the planning commission on that, it was a good joint board and commission exercise. Any other committee updates or things to report out on? Councilmember comments?
I have one thing. I just want to remind everyone that the superintendent is presenting his proposed budget for the schools tomorrow night at the school board meeting, which begins at 7:00 PM. I haven't looked at the agenda, it's somewhere on the agenda. But worth it for us to pay attention, because the last time we talked about this was in December at our joint meeting. So it'll be interesting to see where the schools have landed on their request.
We send that...
We have another ADU session tomorrow, right? At the same time? Okay.
It's not same time, it's six o'clock.
Oh, six, eight.
Yeah, but interferes with probably some board meetings and other things.
Can we, could you just have the, or send the superintendent's budget directly to council? Please, could someone just do that? I know it came to Letty and to me, but if it could come to everybody. I know you could go out and seek it, but if someone wouldn't mind just sending it forward with any additional information, that would be great.
Do you want the presentation? Or the, the paper?
The deck and the, the deck and the numbers behind it.
Yeah, we can ask them for that.
Just one additional email, so that's all.
Okay. Other council comments?
I, just a suggestion, coming out of the AD meeting, so the accessory dwelling meeting on Sunday, and just talking about outreach efforts, I think it had come up, you know, that, that focus on Falls Church is a good resource for those people who are already signed up and getting focus on Falls Church. And so we've promoted it, you know, on the city website, we've promoted it through the news press, whether we might be able to do like another push through the morning announcements, for example, just to say like, hey, to get your city news, think about subscribing to Focus on Falls Church, right? Like, so that we can bring in additional users, since it is very good at then, you know, saying, here's the link to the council meeting, here's the upcoming stuff you should beware of, here's what's happening with Restaurant Week and everything else, that there are opportunities for us to promote that readership. And maybe the city can make a request to just run it, you know, in the morning announcements once or twice to do so. And then also, just coming out of the AD meeting, seeing it back on our work session on the 27th, it wasn't clear to me, and I know council member Connolly had made the request about doing the neighborhood meetings, I would be interested in whether staff at this point anticipates fulfilling that request before we get to the meeting on the 27th. I mean, I understand there to be council support for that. I think there was majority support for that. And so I would just like to know, like, do those, are you anticipating doing those three board meetings?
So I need to talk with staff about that, kind of how we would support that, how we would, how we would do it. And so if I could get back to council, I know we have the requests, and we just need to kind of make sure we can actually pull it off.
I did have a conversation with staff on Sunday about that, and he said they were working on it.
Just a side note on your comment, I shared with my neighborhood listserv the focus and the emergency alerts and the request form and the request tracker link. And I was quite surprised at how many people wrote back and said, oh, I didn't know this, I didn't know this, I didn't know this, thank you for forwarding it. So maybe that's something, you know, and people move in and out of the neighborhood, so maybe it's like a tickler that anybody who has one of those, like, once a year you send out, oh, by the way, if you haven't signed up, here are all emergency alerts and better ways to stay connected. So I found it incredibly productive, so I don't know if anybody else has other listservs or neighborhoods, or things that they could put that out on there too, seemed to be helpful.
I can, Debbie, if you're okay, I could forward yours to the Falls Church City Parents listserv.
Oh, yeah, why not?
Okay.
Okay. Other comments? Okay. We want to move on to approval of the minutes. There's three sets.
I move that we vote on them as a single package. I move to approve the minutes from May 22nd, '23, September 9th, 2024, October 28th, 2024.
Just a quick note, I will abstain, because it wasn't there for some of them.
I'll second that.
Ms. Connolly and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And he knows the minutes are adopted.
One abstention.
Oh, with one abstention. Yes. Okay. Any other business? We motion adjourn? Move to adjourn?
Second.
So moved.
Thank you, council.
All in favor? Good night.